Thank you everyone, thank you for joining us. We will call this meeting to order at six o'clock. And this is our meeting, our city council meeting, joint city council successor agency housing authority and successor housing agency, regular meeting of Wednesday, March sixth of two thousand and twenty four. Thank you all those that are joining us here in our chambers and those that are joining us via Facebook Live today as well. Your participation is really critical to us as public servants, so thank you so much. So the public just to go over a couple of items in terms of participation for today. The public can participate joining the meeting via Zoom and the meeting ID for today is located on the agenda, but it is eight one three four two four nine seven one nine eight. You can also join via telephone and the number is one six six nine nine hundred six eight three three. And you can also join via Facebook Live. However, just to note the comments that are made on Facebook will not be recorded as part of the minutes for this meeting. So you do have to get on this Zoom. And we also have Spanish translations for those that needed in person and then also on Facebook Live. So with that, can we hit a roll call please?
Mayor Ana Velasquez here.
Mayor Pochamara dejo.
Here.
Councilmember Ben Jimenez here.
Absent.
Councilmember Fernando Cabrera.
Here.
Yeah.
Thank you, so we do have a quorum, so we'll move on to our next item which is our public comments on closed session items. And for today, we do have one closed session item. The city council recessed to close session pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine eight and D two to confer with its attorney regarding litigation and is hereby of the opinion that a significant exposure to litigation exists. So with that, we have any members of the public excuse me that wish to make any comments on the closed session item. We have three minutes, please be brief and to the point. I'll start with those that are joining us here in our chambers. Okay, seeing none, then I will take it out to those that are joining us via Zoom. And I do see two hands. So this is a reminder, this is public comment on our closed session item. And we do have one closed session item that I just mentioned today. So do I see Eva and Gabby, so I'm assuming you're gonna make a comment on closed session item one. And regards to the city council, we secede to closed session pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine. Okay, so Gabby, can you unmute yourself?
Okay, question, so at this point closed session is off limits or can I speak to that?
So Gabby, the public comment is under the closed session item only. And today we have one closed session item, so if you want to speak on the closed session item, it's not, but we, this is the time to speak on the closed session item.
Okay, perfect, okay, thank you for that clarification. So good evening council members, I like to share every time I spoken during public comment, I have been interrupted. I hope tonight is not the case. I want to say to the mayor and to council member Cabrera, you both advocate for the city of Salda not taking away the voice of the community. And I like to share when you interrupt me during this public comment during past public events, it is very similar to silencing and dismissing my comments. I've requested that you both publicly apologize for your actions. I like to also follow up and ask what is the city council doing to advocate for survivors of child sexual assault and sexual assault period? As like in workshops or resources, have you asked the police of any statistics to share with the community on child sexual assault and sexual assault in general?
Gabby, Gabby, you interrupt me, but that's not the subject. We're talking about the closed session item right now.
Oh, my apologies.
Just a public comment on the closed session item only.
Okay. That, okay, that was good.
Thank you, so do we have any other comments? And to be clear, it's comments on the closed session item, which I stated twice already under closed session item number one. Okay, seeing none, then we will recess to closed session and then we will come back after closed session at six thirty for the public portion of our meeting, thank you.
Everyone, thank you for those that are joining us again here in our chambers and those that are joining us live as well. So we are coming back from our closed session and I will just over to our CBN attorney for report up.
Yes, I'm here, the chair, the council will manage the session to confirm with its attorney on any significant exposure to litigation, provide a direction to the attorney and no other thing will last in this table.
Thank you. So move on to our pledge of allegiance. And if you can please stand and we can... Thank you. And before we move on to our additions or modifications to the agenda, I'd just like to ask for a moment of silence from those that are joining us here and those that are joining us also via Facebook Live. And a moment of silence again for all of the victims of the mass shooting in King City, where four innocent people were killed, our hearts and our prayers are with the families of the city, of all of the families and also the city of King. And we also want to make sure that we thank all of our first responders, including our solid that police department that was there assisting in this horrific, horrific tragic shooting. And I just want to make sure I call out the names of the individuals. Maria Usman Mendosa, who is 42 of King City, Alicia Ramirez of Parisio, who is 32 of King City, Francisco Aldape Perez, who is 32 of King City, and Olivia Perez Pina, 32 of King City. And if you can please jump for a moment of silence. Thank you. Our condolences and our prayers are with the family and the city of King. So at this moment, then we'll move on to additions or modifications to the agenda. Do we have any additions or modifications?
There is one deletion. We are going to move the discussion on hate speech to the next meeting on March 20th to allow for the fourth council to be there when we discuss that.
That will be one, will be...
That is B5.
So with that, we'll move on then to our next item on the agenda, which is our public comments. So at this time, any member of the public may address the city council on items not appearing on the agenda and items of interest to the public within the jurisdiction of the city council. We do have three minutes. Please be brief and to the point. And we do ask that you be respectful when you're talking, when you're speaking. And as a reminder, the council will not comment on public comment, but can direct staff to be able to assist if there's, if it's within the jurisdiction of the city. So at this point, I will open it up for those that are here in our chamber. If there was any public comments, please come to the podium and you do have three minutes.
Pauline Thomasini, 37400 Metz Road, Solid Ed. I'm here on behalf of the Solid Ed Fourth of July Committee. I just want to ask the city council if this still stands true. I think last year you approved to pay for all the fireworks and the forthcoming year, one half of the cost.
Pauline, thank you for coming up for public comments, but that item is item being two on our agenda. So...
Okay, that will be discussed at that time.
Correct.
Okay, yes. So I'm just here to state, I hope the city supports the Fourth of July Committee because we can't do it all alone by ourselves. The Jennifer Wade, the manager of the company, said that last year, I think it was $20,000 total.
So Pauline, do you want to wait for your comment?
Oh, wait, wait.
Yeah, that would be, because it's relevant to that. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any others that are joining us here via Zoom, want to make any public comments?
No more public.
Public. No, those that are in the chamber before I take it out to public, to Zoom.
So, good evening council, we need more mayor, we need more community members. My name is Monica Andrade, I'm a resident of Yerosaúl de and I just want to congratulate our residents for reaffirming our right to elect our leaders. This process has been long and very contentious and I hope that we can move forward as a community. But despite our win to reaffirm our rights to elect a mayor, we are back to square one when the city continues to fall under the threat of litigation if we fail to move towards district elections. I hope the council will reconsider a fair and equitable floor district map and that this time around reason prevails over arrogant and stubbornness. I want to also address America Thames comments during the state of the city in which she said that the balanced housing in order to have lighting and prosperity city, we need to attract, in order to attract those big box stores that we needed, you know, to... A higher income, I guess, higher mixed housing, I guess, balanced housing. And I'd like to see, you know, that that side of that information, it needs to be decided before it's presented as fast that, that if I'm correct, the mayor put them, said that this... the Mayor Potem said that this was, that this is what the developers are looking for when coming into our city. And so I think that it's only appropriate that if these comments are made during the state of the city address, that they be factual and back and cited that that is, you know, I want to know where she's getting that information and presenting it. Okay, thank you and good night.
Okay, do we have any additional comments from those that are joining us via Zoom? Okay, seeing none, then I will take it...
I've got two over Zoom.
I mean, sorry, those that are joining us via, in our chamber. So now we will take it out to Zoom and I do see that we have to. Thank you, Stephen. So Mr. Melvin Mason, if you can please unmute yourself.
Good evening, members of the city council, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, city staff and residents of the great city of Solidad. I'm just calling in just to briefly say that I'm from Seaside. We fought a lot of battles around voting rights over the years. I've been involved in civil rights and voting rights for about 56 or 57 years. And there were a lot of us in Seaside who were calling for folks to not support Measure P because we felt like voting rights are sacrosanct and being able to vote for your own mayor, which seems to be just a simple thing to think out, but also would have, you know, would have served to have violated certain aspects of voting rights had the citizens not taken the stand that they did, voted the way that they did, defeated this measure and put it in accordance with their thinking. We look at this as a big victory in Seaside. There were a lot of people that were actually cheering when they found out that this measure had gone down to two feet and that the citizens in Solidad will continue to be able to vote for who they want to occupy the seat of mayor. So I'm just calling in to say congratulations to the citizens of Solidad. We consider you a sister city to Seaside, and we just want you to keep moving forward. And anything that any of us can do in our community, that includes me and a number of other people to help out in anything that you need to have help with, please don't hesitate to call on us. But again, congratulations on the big victory.
Thank you for your comment. So we'll move on now to Jordi Sec Devise. Oh, wait, that is, I don't know if that's a correct name, Stephen. I see Jordi.
Yeah.
Jordi, can you unmute yourself? Okay, I'm not sure if that's a real name.
Okay.
Yep.
Who was the next person?
Okay, so we'll move on to Ana Vidalis. Ana, can you unmute yourself?
Our interpreter just joined.
Oh, that's Ana, that's the interpreter. Okay. Thank you. So I am our interpreter in case anyone needs interpretation. So any other, this is the time for public comments. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none. Then thank you for those public comments. We'll move into our next item on the agenda, which is introduction of new employees. And I will turn this over to, I will turn this over to our public works director, Don Volkovs.
Good evening, Mayor, council, Don Volkovs, Public Works Director. Quarterly, we like to bring new employees to meet council and to be recognized as they join the city forces. So tonight, we have a new engineering employee and a new water division employee. Alex is going to introduce our new engineer and then voices will introduce our new water technician.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm happy to present our newest member in Public Works Engineering Division, Harry Casavala. Please come to the podium.
Hi, my name is Angelica. And I'm very grateful for this opportunity here in, at the city of Solidad. And I'm very glad to meet you all and I hope to do great things for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, welcome. It's good to see more female representation in engineering. So thank you. Okay, so is Moi here?
Moi, are you with us via Zoom?
Oh, he is. Yes, I see his hand is up. Mois is, you want to, yeah, thank you. You can unmute yourself.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Great. Meeting everybody. So we'd like to do some new water operator from King City, Evan Bloom, to the podium.
Thank you guys for having me. I'm very excited for this opportunity. I really appreciate it. I don't take it for granted at all. I'm enjoying the job so far and I look forward to making a fulfilling career. I love it. So thank you.
Yeah, and congratulations and welcome to the water team and public works, right? Which is really important and also really excited to know that you're from King City. So really making sure that we are able to bring more of our local talent and keep our local talent here. So thank you. Thank you to both of you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any other? No, that, okay, thank you. Okay, so we will move on then to our next item on the agenda, which is council presentation. We have three of those tonight. And we will begin with our proclamation of the city council, the city of Solidad, presented to utility maintenance mechanic, Juan Vasquez, for his dedicated service to the city of Solidad. So I'll turn this over to our public works director.
Okay, thanks again. This is a happy for Juan, but sad day for the Solidad Public Works family. Juan's, Gabe's going to introduce Juan and go over a little bit of the background while he was here. He's just been a phenomenal city employee. It's sad to see him retiring, but he's well deserved, has a well deserved retirement and we wish him very well in his retirement. Again, he's been here and just been a pleasure to work with, professional, friendly, hardworking, you know, the typical public works employee. Now, above and beyond myself and most others in his dedication to his job. So, Gabe, do you want to say a few words?
I think, good evening, everybody. Yeah, it's with great pleasure that I present the, I mean, Juan's recognition. Believe it or not, he was already retired prior to working with us. At the opportunity here, he began working as a temporary worker for us and everything went great. So when the time came about and a position opened, he joined us for eight years. So to be able to work at that capacity that he worked at, you know, I hope nobody gets offended out here, but so far, one of the best employees that I've ever had the pleasure of supervising out here. I try to keep everybody as safe and balanced as possible, but within it was hard to pry away from work. He was, he's got such a great working philosophy, how to remind him about his breaks, how to remind him about taking lunch on time. He'd always be working. Give him a choice of working, not working. He always could busy. So one of the best overall experiences ever, as I told Don. So I hope it's a good precedent for the rest of us, a good example. And want to say thank you along with the rest of us.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Gabe, for that. So I just want to make some notes and thank you for highlighting what he, the type of employee that he's been for the city of Solidad, hardworking and committed. But I have to say, Juan was dedicated and never missed a day of work, right? Or took vacation time. I mean, we want, I mean, that's dedication, right? And also, I think for me on the personal side, it was part of the proclamation. Thank you so much, Juan, for your dedication to being part of the city, to supporting our water reclamation facility, to be able to work on our city police vehicles, public works vehicles, and for your dedicated service as a leader and as an employee. It's so amazing to see, but also want to congratulate your family, your wife, the Juana, you guys have been married for over 50 years. That's really amazing. And you have eight children, six boys and two girls and 50 grandkids. You know, we commend your work at the city, but also your personal side. Thank you so much for, you know, the dedication that you served on both ends, on your personal and also with your family. So with that, we hope, we hope now that you're retiring, that you get time to enjoy the kids, being around the family and your children. So with that, it's our pleasure on behalf of the city. I'll say now therefore, hereby confirm that the city council, the city of Solidad, takes considerable pride and pleasure and draw on particular attention to the accomplishments of Juan Vasquez through this proclamation that's hereby honored, commend and congratulate Juan Vasquez for his exemplary service to the citizens of Solidad. And we wish you well in your retirement. So if you want to come and accept the proclamation. Do you want to say a few words and then we can take a...
Well, you can say, you're all over again. The only thing I can say is, thanks everything for all my efforts, my coworkers and everybody right here. Was very nice with me. I don't know. Well...
Yeah. So do any of the coworkers, I know I see a lot of coworkers that are here and we'll give you some space to be able to say a few words.
I'm going to say in Spanish, so you can translate it. Pero yo estoy muy orgulloso de lo que ha hecho Juan con nosotros. Llegó, yo creo, un año antes, después que yo, pero con él y conocer, nah, hicimos mucho trabajo y siempre le voy a dar muchas gracias a Juan por el trabajo que hizo. Trabajador que como dijo Gabe nunca daba razones por qué no quería trabajar o no, siempre estaba ahí, siempre ayudaba a todos. Bueno, actitud nunca fallaba. And yo estoy muy orgulloso de, usually it's the parents that say something about the kid, right? But I'm very proud of Juan. I just, yeah, it brings a lot of pride and I hope we can carry what he's brought to us. But I'm very proud of this man for showing us, you know, how to just carry yourself about at the workplace, coworkers, and just keep giving and supporting each other. Juan has just been a great employee. He got here a little bit after I did, but I'm proud of this man and I'm happy to see him, you know, retiring and his family here and us get to enjoy that with them. But I'm very proud of that man right there. And it was a pleasure to work with him. The years, I'm going on nine years and every day he's always have been a hard worker. So I just want him to know that. I'm proud of him, very proud of him. And I'm glad to see him get to this point in his life where he can enjoy it. And I hope I get to retire from here. But no, Mr. Juan has been a great man. He's...
Hi, I work with Juan all this time and we're always joking around. He goes, man, he's, we're going to retire. He's still going to be here. He's been around us all the time, you know, like I said in there, we literally had to go out there and tell him, Juan, take a break. Juan, you got to take your lunch. Okay, stop working. We got to go home now. We're definitely working and working, you know, and there was a big old player working with him, you know, we're all going to miss him. And only, I mean, he rings around everybody because he's a really hard worker. Just want to tell him, thank you for working with us.
Thank you.
Felicidades otra vez y ojalá que disfrute ahora su retiro con su familia y que pueda, pueda disfrutar de un tiempo sin trabajar, ¿verdad? Si podemos darle su proclamación y podemos tomar un retrato con usted y su familia y los, sus trabajadores, sus compañeros del trabajo.
Will this take a picture and we'll come back? Okay. I will open it up for the council to say a couple of words, Mayor Potem, and then I'll let you know.
Gracias, gracias, para que entienda el señor y también para que su esposa también entienda. Me da, you know, me da mucho orgullo escuchar, ¿verdad?, sus compañeros que están trabajando y también sus patrones, sus supervisores del trabajo excelente que hizo. A no creer que no cayó ningún día. Es excelente. Y también mirar el ánimo, ¿verdad? Y lo miro muy feliz, muy contento, con buena vibra. A mí, mirar el ánimo, ¿verdad?, que usted, que usted tiene y también el buen modelo que le está dando a los jóvenes, ¿verdad? O qué orgullo de, de su familia poder estar aquí, poder escuchar, ¿verdad? Y ser que entonces, o sea, que no estaban casa, estaba trabajando duro para poder para ellos y para dar buen ejemplo. Muchas gracias y le deseo un buen retirement.
Gracias.
Yo solo voy a decir que le deseo una jubilación activa porque la gente como usted que siempre está activa no puede quedarse tranquilo, no puede quedarse estético. Entonces, a plantar árboles, a hacer todo lo, hacer un jardín a toda la casa y durante y a divertirse con sus miembros porque por ahí dicen que se quieren más los hijos, ¿no? Y lo disfruten.
Gracias, gracias. Council, we want to pause for a minute to take a photo. Thank you to, thank you for allowing us to take a few moments to be able to take some photos with Juan and his family and also with his coworkers. So... So, um, now we are, we are on to our next item and we have two more presentations. Uh, we have two proclamations and the next one again, the proclamation and honor and recognition of the American Red Cross declaring March twenty twenty four as Red Cross Month. Um, whereas the Red Cross is a symbol of hope, compassion and humanitarian service dedicated to alleviating human suffering and saving lives. And, uh, whereas the American Red Cross has spoke, has story, has a storied history of responding to disasters, providing vital blood services, supporting military families and offering help and safety trainings to our communities. And whereas the month of March has been designated as Red Cross Month, providing an opportunity for all of us to recognize and express gratitude for the invaluable contributions of the American Red Cross in our community. And whereas the American Red Cross Central Coast Chapter has worked tirelessly to support more than seven hundred and seventy thousand people across the counties of Monterey, Santa Cruz and San Bernardino. Thank you. Now therefore, it will be resolved that the city council of the city of Solidad hereby proclaims the month of March as Red Cross Month. And we encourage all of our residents to join us in acknowledging the vital role of the American Red Cross and to express our gratitude for their dedication to the children's service and compassionate and commitment service to our, to our residents. Um, we further call upon all of our leaders, businesses, schools, the residents to support the American Red Cross through your volunteer, volunteerism, also through the blood donations that are needed and financial contributions, ensuring the central organization continues to thrive and fulfill its humanitarian mission. And on behalf of the city council, it's all my honor to be able to present this to you, Patsy. And, you know, I, I think we've all seen the, um, the different disasters in the last, you know, since the pandemic, right? When there was much, uh, a need for assistance of the Red Cross, but also some of the just natural disasters that have been occurring all across um, our cities, our country, and the American Red Cross is vital to the victims, um, of these disasters and being able to be there to provide them with resources, comfort and compassion and care. So I applaud you, I thank you, our gratitude to the American Red Cross, Patsy, for all that you do and all that the staff does to support our victims in the time of need. So I will turn it over for, for you to say a few words and then we'll bring it out to the council. Then we'd like to take a picture with you afterwards as well.
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council and staff. I appreciate you honoring the American Red Cross during the month of March. Um, it is true with the many disasters that we responded to and just recently, within the last hour and a half, with the flooding that happened in the, uh, Monterey County area, the, I looked, uh, the, the rail playing area, uh, where we have several homes that have been red tagged and, and yellow tagged. So our tenure on the ground, they're helping. Um, our volunteers work three hundred and sixty-five days, seven days a week, twenty-four hours. Um, disasters don't know eight to five, usually one or two in the morning. When it's cold, they're on the street and know where to go, right? So the American Red Cross is the one that shows that, to provide that support. It's critical, it's needed. Um, we're always looking for volunteers and like you said, the blood donation is even more critical. Each unit that's collected saves three lives. There's people that depend on it every day just to live. So whatever you could do, whether it's your time, your, your, um, your blood donation, whether you can do a financial contribution, even a dollar goes a long way. Um, we have the, we are led by volunteers and, and that's why we're able to do as much work as we do in the communities. Um, the month of June, we will be here in Solidad providing, uh, much needed smoke alarms. We're offering them free in the community. This is our eighth year coming around. And we'll be working with our local fire department, uh, to install those smoke alarms in the community. We'll get a flyer out to the city to help promote it, um, through your social media accounts. Um, but we're here, we're here, uh, you know, my phone's always twenty-four seven. Now we're eager to provide preparedness for the community. We'll be working with the city council on that. Um, and, um, getting our youth prepared in schools as well. It's really important, um, and the community, so that we're a resilient community. Disasters, they, they don't know the time, like we're dealing with a horrible shooting in, in King City, right? So we want to make sure that our communities are as prepared as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Patsy, and thank you again. We're greatly appreciative, appreciative, um, for the Red Cross and all of its volunteers. I'll open it up for comments from the council and author, um, with council member, then move on to our mayor.
To, I would.
Oh, okay.
Yes, thank you. And yes, um, Patsy, I just wanted to, to thank you for everything you're doing. Only been playing, uh, uh, messenger tag for months now. I was excited to see you, um, in, in person and thank you for coming on here. But just really want to thank you for everything that the Red Cross does and everything that you do personally, like you said, everything from, um, Blood I Know. I have called you guys before, um, in, in previous jobs that I've had where I worked in the housing industry when there was fires, sometimes multiple fires didn't matter. Like you said, the time you guys would be there. And I think, you know, when, when people in need see that, that Red Cross symbol, um, your logo, they, they know that relief is on its way and that's huge. Um, you know, I have seen people in, in times when they don't know what they're gonna do and they don't have a relative or a, or a friend to stay at their home. Um, but also the, um, besides just responding to emergencies, I think it's the preparing. Um, I believe you guys stayed in, in solid, and I want to say, uh, business, emergency preparedness with the Building Business Back, um, group. And, you know, you guys are doing it at schools, um, doing it for communities at March. So just, you know, thank you for everything that, that you guys do. I appreciate it.
Oh, I just want to thank you for all the work. Uh, you don't really know what the service that you guys provide until you actually use them or you need them. Uh, growing up in Mexico, that was the first place where we, anything that happened to anybody, it was Red Cross. And I always consider you guys the main source of health and, and hope. You're not just going to help, you, you bring hope to the communities. And thank you for working with our community.
Thank you. Nation for you, I would love to take a photo, but because we're also gonna honor Women's History Month. I think I would like for you, if you're able to stay when I do the proclamation, we do have, um, we have some words for that, but if we can take the photo with you again.
Good, okay, thank you.
I think so our next proclamation is for Women's History Month. And the theme for this year is women who advocate for equity, diversity and inclusion. And, you know, very inspirational words from Patsy and obviously very applicable uh, for this recognition as well. Uh, but whereas International Women's Day was first recognized in Austria, Denmark, Germany and Switzerland in nineteen eleven and is now observed on March eighth around the world and provides an opportunity to recognize and reflect on the progress made to advance women's equality, to celebrate the gains made by women in our society and reflect on the challenges and barriers women continue to face. Whereas President Carter initially declared the week of March eighth, nineteen eighty, National Women's History, History Week, but since evolved into a month-long celebration, acknowledging the remarkable contributions and influence of American women, both locally and globally. And I think this is actually an annual celebration, right? Um, but whereas each, um, whereas extraordinary accomplishments of women, both past and present, have left an incredible mark on every aspect of society, from science and technology to arts and culture, politics and beyond. And whereas the tireless efforts of women pioneers, leaders, visionaries have paved the way for progress, equality and justice inspiring generations to come. Whereas the theme of Women's History Month, which is women who advocate for equity, diversity and inclusion underscores the importance of recognizing the barriers that women have overcome and continue to face, while emphasizing the need to build bridges toward a more inclusive, equitable future for all. And whereas Mujeres en Acción, and I know they, I, I did see Maria Elena Manso, who's joining us from Mujeres en Acción, exemplifies this theme arising out of the need to uplift the work of women striving to improve their lives and the lives of the families through advocacy and effort. So it is my honor, um, on behalf of the city council of the city of Solidad, to proclaim the month of March as Women's History Month. And we urge all of our residents, um, to join us thanking a woman that has made a difference, but also in advancing the theme of equity, uh, diversity and inclusion. So with that, we do have a proclamation. I don't, uh, Maria Elena is not able to join us here, um, in the chambers, but I do have her online. So Maria Elena, would you like to unmute yourself and share a few words?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Velázquez, and thank you, council member. And really appreciative of, of recognizing the work that we have done uh, in Mujeres en Acción and, and, and COPA. That only happens when we work together. So really grateful for all the support that we have received from, uh, you, especially you, uh, Mayor Velázquez throughout the years and, and, and looking forward to continue and, and, and doing more work together with the, all the talented women that are part of Mujeres en Acción and, and in our communities. So thank you, thank you, very grateful. I'm, I'm better at doing the work than to, to speaking, but, uh, but really, really honored and grateful for, for this recognition, for all work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Maria Elena. And so we will get, make sure that we get this to you. And just so people know, Mujeres en Acción, their, uh, connection and networks that they have throughout the different cities within, uh, South County, um, and throughout Monterey County. And I just want to say, I mean, I know Maria Elena talked, touched on a couple of the, uh, critical things that they've done, but they were really instrumental, um, and really supporting women to get into different job opportunities, especially farmworker women. Um, they worked really, really close with Jovi Aviation, um, as part of COPA and as part of, uh, women's and, uh, Mujeres en Acción, with other partnerships to ensure that those job opportunities were coming to farmworker women and that they had the opportunity to be retrained. Uh, they were also really instrumental in supporting, um, our Senator Caballero's, um, one of her Senate bills, um, Senate Bill eight hundred in terms of really trying to advance the, uh, aviation field and allowing for more of those opportunities here in South County, especially for our women. So I just want to thank you for all the work that you do to really make sure that the policies are in place, so our women and our, um, our communities continue to thrive through Mujeres en Acción. So thank you so much, Maria Elena, to you and all the team that you have of women that are just an amazing force throughout Monterey, throughout Monterey County. So thank you. So I will turn it over now to you. I'm trying to do this, but, you know, trying to be equal in terms of who I, uh, who speaks next, but go ahead.
Thank you. And yes, just, um, also just wanted to, you know, again, um, you thank all, all women. I see, I see many here and I think, and, and also many ages. And I think, you know, there's contributions that, that we all make, um, to each other, to our community. Um, I think also, you know, the older generations make contributions to the younger ones. And sometimes it's not even us doing that purposely, it's because they see you're doing, you know, doing something or setting an example. And also I wanted to thank, um, the Mujeres en, in Acción also for everything that they have done. I have not had the pleasure of meeting them or working with them, but I definitely am open to that and I would like to, you know, to meet them and hopefully have their, uh, resources come to our city and benefit our, our young women. Thank you.
Thank you, council member.
Um, for me, it was nineteen seventy-five, the first time that I heard, um, celebrating women. And my question back then was, what is celebrating? And I, I can tell you that throughout my life, I have seen with my own eyes the contributions, the, uh, the work that we do, that you guys do in our families, in our communities, I mean, in our countries. When I came to the United States, I, I met this person, uh, he was a mayor domo in the, um, Lechuga. And his wife cut Lechugas, cut lettuce. And he will tell the new, uh, the new workers, just go at the space of a woman. And her wife was really, really good. And I have seen so many, so many people in my life. Hmm, I was, uh, thinking about one a little bit, uh, my mother never stopped working. My mother will wake up at four o'clock in the morning, make a lunch for my father and all these things. So I had several, several, um, role models in my house for the tremendous work that women do. I think that we don't do much to recognize the work that you do. We don't do enough, we have to do more. Um, a lot of our women work in the fields here, next to, unto men. And we have to, we have to do something to recognize their value and their work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. So with that, um, then we can just give a big round of applause. Uh, proclamation to her, but now if we can just pause for a few minutes and then we can take a few photos. Thank you. Okay, thank, thank you. Again, thank you for your patience as we pause for a bit to take some photos and celebrate, um, and continue to celebrate Women's History Month and also all the work that the American Red Cross does for our communities here locally and also throughout our country. Um, so with that, we will move on to presentations and we have three of those today. Uh, we'll begin with the presentation. Uh, Hartnell College President Superintendent Michael Gutierrez is here with us as well as Vice President Administrative Services, Graciela Menadosa, and Vice President of Student Success and Feeding Excellence, Dr. Ram Subra, Subra, um, Subramania. Who will present a brief presentation regarding the Hartnell expansion. Um, and we also have the President of Hartnell College here with us. And thank you so much for honoring what you're honoring us with your presence here.
Well, it's truly my honor to be with all of you this, uh, this evening, Mayor Velázquez, members of the council, members of the community of Solida. Truly an honor to be with all of you today. And thanks to the vision of the Hartnell Community College District Board and the support of the citizens, back in twenty sixteen, we were able to pass the Measure T bond. And with that, we have been able to expand our footprint. So not only did we build on main campus, the state-of-the-art facility in nursing, we created centers in Castroville, we expanded in King City, and we were able to build a brand-new, beautiful facility here in Solida. Over the past twenty months that I've been at Hartnell, we've talked quite a bit about how in our centers, we can create opportunities for residents where they can start and finish a credential, particularly in career and technical education. So we began this discussion here locally in Solida, and go to the next slide there, yes, with a group of, of, no, the one right, we go back. Uh, and you can see some of the members that attended these meetings from this area. So we had people from Hartnell College, from the Solida Unified School District, and you had the city manager here, uh, from Solida, Megan Hunter, begin this discussion about how we could create these career, technology, education opportunities for our community. And we looked at a lot of data and what kept on cropping up is that advanced transportation, in particular diesel mechanics, was a theme that kept on coming up. And as luck would have it, one of our programs at Hartnell is advanced transportation focusing on diesel mechanics. So we took this to the Board of Trustees at Hartnell, proposal to do an expansion here next to our Solida Center, and they approved the expansion. And they approved the expansion using Measure T funds. And it will be located in the next slide, right next to the current structure. And it's an old photo because the park is now right across the eh the the center. But as you see to the right of the center, we're going to more or less double the square footage that we have. Where we can build two really large labs that can be open and multi-use. And the focus is going to be, and if we can go to the next slide. In advanced transportation, as you can see in the the third bullet, in diesel. And so that program currently exists at our Alisal Center. But it's shared space with our auto tech program. And since most of the jobs reside in South County, we are moving that program. We will not duplicate it at Alisal. So we're removing the entire advanced transportation program and put that in the new facility here in Solida. And it does two things. One, it creates access for the community here, for the jobs that are here. But it also allows the auto tech program at Alisal to expand. It's currently an impacted program. So we'll be able to double the number of students that are in that program. We will also be able to offer advanced mani eh, excuse me, mechatronics. And we're the only ag mechatronics in the state of California to be offering that program. And that will be offered a win-your-certificates here at the Solida Center. And we will also create a new program in composite manufacturing technology. The intent is to use the facility all day. So during the day, we will work with our local high schools here in Solida, Gonzales and in South County to offer dual enrollment. In these programs and in Janet as well in the other part of the facility. And then during the evening and weekend, we will focus on adults and the incumbent workers to use the facility to gain credentials in those areas. So we're really excited about the opportunity in terms of timeline. We hope that eh the new building will be up and ready to use in the fall of twenty twenty-seven. So while it seems like it's far away, it will be here before we know it. And eh we're again really excited to expand here in Solida and to be able to offer greater opportunities to the residents of South County. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So how would you, how exciting to be able to be, you know, just eh what's in store for the future of eh of this facility and the expansion of this facility. So thank, thank you so much for that. I eh so I'm gonna open it up for any comments from the council. But before I do that, I wanna take it out to the public. Do you need to take it out to the public for comments? Since it's a presentation. Mike, I don't need to take it out to the public. Okay. So because it's a presentation, if there's any comments eh from the council or any questions. Eh so I'll open it up at this time. So Mayor Potem, ladies first.
So I I do eh first of all, thank you for that presentation. I do have a question. So I first met you when you had just started at the Taste of Pinnacles and it was an introduction eh event that Edika Pavia Chavez did for you. Eh and of course, she was, I believe, the the board president. Eh and so my question is, back then, I recall it was a huge hack. I think the first week that you started eh, you guys, this computer system had been hacked and. And so I just wanted to know, did it, did it get easier from there?
Yeah, I I it actually happened the third, the third month eh of the job. I don't recommend it for anyone while you start out in a in a new role. And eh it it has gotten eh a lot easier and and the the people have been incredibly welcoming to to me and my family while I've been here. And and we're eh pretty excited about the type of work that eh we're doing. Our enrollments are up eh at Hartnell. They are up twenty percent over what they were last spring in in terms of unduplicated headcount and thirty-four percent in terms of units taken. Which means that they're, that we have a lot more students, but they're also taking a lot more courses. And that's really critical because the closer, the faster we can get students to complete fifteen units. The likelihood that they will finish their role increases by thirty-seven percent. So there's a lot of good things that are happening. And yes, to answer your question, it has gotten a little easier.
Thirty here. And then also I did just have a comment. I'm honestly and sincerely very eh very stoked and appreciative that you that you guys are here. And eh when, you know, when I did find out that you guys were gonna be adding eh vocational training. I was so excited because I have three children and I can vouch that not all of them wanna go to four-year university. And not all of them, you know, they're all eh different individually. Eh so that's great to have more options for our, for our community and our young ones and also our our older ones. You know, that that wanna try something different. I know eh I've had the pleasure through eh eh my personal auto repair shop. We have actually had some of the interns from eh from your auto tech program. And eh they have been great. They're energetic. They they know, you know, the basics. Eh so I just wanted to thank you and I'm excited to have you guys here.
Thank you.
I'm gonna give you a little bit of hard time.
Okay.
Eh please, I'll take this first. So I started working for San Francisco City College back in two thousand and two. Eh at that point, I was working for two different community colleges, which is that one and Santa Clara, um Mission and Santa Clara. Both of these colleges have two eh, how do you call it?
Dual enrollment, yes.
Eh San Francisco City College had one they call a middle college. In which high school students will go directly into the college and do all the years taken directly. So many of those colleges, and I was speaking in Spanish, so I got at least ten, ten of them every, every semester. So eh many of these students graduated with a, with both a high school stu- a high school diploma and an AA from that college. So I started working for San for Hartnell College in two thousand and six. And comparing my students in in the Bay Area with our students here. I would say that is about ten years of differences. Eh I will, I'm I'm really, I really appreciated that you were, that you go into all this because we need this. We need eh this urgently. I I believe that there's a couple of things that eh that I would like to see. One of them being getting more eh full-time faculty in satellite centers. Because we only get part-time. And part-time, I was part-time. So they call it the flying. You know, you fly from one thing to the other one and then they.
They're pick-me-up flyers.
Yeah, and then they 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 put fifty students in our classes so that you can make it compact. And that affects our students. That affects your students. The other thing that affects our students is scheduling. Many of our students have to wake up in the morning to help their parents prepare their meals. And then they go to, they go to bed and wake up to take their children. So having as, having a flexible eh schedule is tremendous for them. Both for the children and the parents. The other thing that I've been, I mean, since I started in this, in this position commenting is that we need more eh partnerships with the local unions. Because they already have the technology, they already have instructors, we we could just incorporate them into into our community college. Eh there is a lot of things that we that we can do. Because we we not only have students that go to high school and they don't wanna go eh, they don't wanna go directly to the university. We also have younger parents that didn't have the chance to go to school. But they need the eh eh some sort of training. And I'm looking at cement. I'm looking at masonry. I'm looking at welding. You guys have an extraordinary welding, welding program. We could, we could use some of that over here. And those represent eh well-paying jobs, not only for students, but for parents that that would have. And eh thank you so much for for what you're doing. That is tremendous. I think that because I I I was an instructor for almost seventeen years and I saw the need about eh our students' needs. And how much they struggle to go to class, I can understand. I can appreciate the job that you guys are doing. So thank you so much for that. And I hope that you can contribute. I didn't, not maybe not this time, but adding more trainings for this. Imagine you have the middle of the valley. So you can have students from either eh San eh King City all the way to 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 eh Gonzales. That is a tremendous amount of people that you can have.
And then thank you for for all of those comments that were, were hearing you or or being of instruction that's here too and is hearing you eh as well. You've made, you've made a a lot of really wonderful suggestions. And and with the advanced transportation program, that that is going to be where our full-time faculty will be. Because the program will only exist there. And with our dual enrollment. We will be opening this fall the first early college high school in the county with Gonzales eh high school. And and people have asked, well, why, why Gonzales? Well, when I got here and I was visiting the different superintendents. Superintendents, I wanted to say yes. And so that's why we are doing eh the eh early college high school there. And over the past three years, we've gone from six hundred and thirty students in dual enrollment. To twelve hundred dual enrollment students to fourteen hundred dual enrollment students. So that's eh significant increases little by little, giving the opportunity for students to take for free, as you said. High school courses while they're earning college credits simultaneously. And with the early college high school, they will have the opportunity to earn their associate degree at the same time that they earn the high school diploma. So thank you for for those comments and we will certainly take them seriously.
Have you considered a a college path for middle schoolers?
You know, I think eh eh with the early college high school, you really have to eh establish that and create that. So that eh eh the students are college-ready when they get into ninth grade. And so that that will happen naturally with Gonzales, but we will need to expand that out with a different school district.
A lot of the majority.
Thank, thank you for those comments. Yeah, thank you, thank you so much. So yeah, absolutely. I have a couple of comments and then some questions as well. But you know, I'm just, for me, it's, I I'm proud because I am a Hartnell alum, proud Panther. I went two years and then I transferred. So I have a lot of gratitude and debt to Hartnell for what, you know, the opportunities it was able to provide to me. Eh and to many of of, you know, my my friends eh that went to Hartnell and then we transferred to eh a four-year college. Eh but but so thank you so much for that. And I also wanna just make sure that I take a moment to also, you mentioned Measure T and what was able, what we were able to build. Eh here with the Measure T eh, you know, our solid ed voters. I have to say, I wanna thank them because they approved that measure. Eh and anything that has to do, and this is what's really unique about South County. Eh despite some of our other, you know, financial situations. But eh when it comes to education, when it comes to children and families, our our South County communities, you know. Are not afraid to to eh to make sure that they're putting in out of their pocket to make sure that this happens. And so our voters were really significant in approving this as well throughout the valley, obviously. But I wanna say, you know, shout out to our solid ed voters because I know, you know, we were campaigning, I was campaigning for that, making sure that everybody had the opportunity. To be able to eh have a campus, especially knowing that solid ed would have the opportunity was really instrumental. So thank you so much for that. So I just have, I have, just in terms of the the program that advanced transportation. And I don't know exactly what the eh different types of criteria you're gonna have or curriculum. But as you know, we're transitioning to zero emission vehicles, right? And the state of California has really hefty goals in terms of the transition to that. A lot of it, the pollution really comes from our big rigs and our trucks. And that's, you know, the the highest polluter. And we wanna reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. So with that, I know there's a lot of discussion in terms of hydrogen and other types of clean energy. So will that advanced transportation include also, you know, the eh skill sets to be able to work on vehicles? That also include, that also have, you know, our electric vehicles or eh hydrogen.
That's a really eh great question. The eh program eh as it moves down will eh focus right now on the traditional eh mechanics. Because that's what eh we have here eh currently. But eh because we're the only program in the area, San Luis County with their bucking system. Is eh getting a really large grant that will transition from gas to eh electronic. And we're going to be the partner eh for that. And so it will transition our program into what is being required eh in our state regarding eh eh no emission eh vehicles.
Okay, yeah, good. So I said at the MST chair as well, and I know we've, I mean, obviously, it's a lot of money and eh but but that's a goal, right? The transition from electric, I mean, the transition from from diesel to electric is gonna be really real. So just to kind of make sure that we, so I'm glad to hear that because I think that's really important, especially as we're establishing programs. That we're looking ahead for the future of what our workforce is gonna look like and the skill sets that they're gonna need to be able to accommodate and compete, right? At the end of the day, we wanna prepare them now so they're able to compete for those jobs in the future.
So the eh each of our eh career programs have technical advisory committees. And they're going to be critical to be able to time when that transition will need to take place. Because as they're transitioning eh their eh workforce and and their equipment, then we will start doing the same thing with the curriculum.
Okay, good. And then my other question is, I know that we have eh, you know, we have a CTE program here as well. And they're doing a lot also. I think they have one of the, their programs also includes truck drivers. So are you partnering with them? Is there any opportunities for internships? I know that was said earlier, but I think as as we're having these programs, making sure that as our eh our students are getting certified. That they do have a pathway, right? And that we're able to create those pathways now to look at what are the job industries that are really gonna be, that are, that are in need of these, this type of workforce. So we're starting to already do those connections for them and making sure that they do have a job once they're done with their certificate program.
Awesome. And we've been working closely with Solida Unified in in terms of aligning the eh curriculum and and the the career programs that they have. So that eh the students can eh create stackable credentials. So if it's truck driving that they're doing at the high school, it can then stack into the diesel mechanic program.
And building those partnerships. Yeah, thank you so much. I'm looking forward to just the connections in terms of the internships also. And really also looking at how do we partner with our unions, which, you know, provide, we've been hearing with a lot of the job needs. And eh, you know, what what is needed in terms of our workforce and retirement and good-paying jobs is what we really wanna make sure that our our students are have available for them. So yeah, so thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Good question.
Excited.
I was, I have two questions. So just in in remembering that that when the women's celebrating with the eh women's month. Eh I remember that my own, when I was at Hartnell, so I went through eh EFL and and I actually was part of the eh the welding eh program. Eh and I remember a friend that was part of the eh welding program a year after. Have you, do you have plans to encourage more girls to participate in that, in those kinds of trainings? Because there's a lot of girls that are not, that are that are attracted to those programs, but they don't, they're not willing to do it because of that. They 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 might fear that you're not gonna be accepted or they they're gonna be discouraged to go.
Yeah, I think that's, that's one of the priorities that that we have because it's not just eh eh attracting women. It's part of our eh diversity, equity, inclusion programming. And so eh you're correct that eh there are some of our programs that have historically been more male-dominated. And we have eh a couple of ways that eh eh we can do that. One is to try to eh hire women that are going to teach eh in the program. And then the others is eh making sure that we're doing eh the connections with high schools at younger ages. So that eh the young women could be interested in things like welding, ag macronics, auto tech. Things that maybe eh the stereotype is that it it's not something that women would be interested. But that's not really true, right? But it's it's more about awareness.
Wow. So thank you so much for that. So eh at this point, then what we'll do, thank, thank you so much. We really appreciate the expansion. And I think all of our community is is really appreciative and looking forward to, you know, bringing that here eh locally. Transportation is still a barrier for many of our families. So having those classes here is really significant. Eh so with that, let me open it up to public comments in case there's any comments from our public since you, since we have you here. Okay, so we'll open it up to any public comments for those that are joining us here. And then I will go out to Zoom.
I'm sorry, my, I was itching my, my seat, my seat, my hand. I couldn't contain myself, you know. Eh in last year, I was part of a volunteer for the eh Latin Ambees eh. Um in last year, I was part of a, a volunteer for the um Latin American, uh was sponsored by Dubla. And um every, every week, every Saturday, thank you guys for lending that space and that opportunity. We took middle school girls. From the east side, from um who targeted low income, um first generation Latinas in middle school. To participate and get exposed to all these STEM um. Programs um and career options. And I think the one that I was blown away was Megatronics. Starting salary, seventy thousand, straight off the bag. And my question to the presenter at that time was, how many women do you have enrolled at the time? You know, in, in this program. And it was heartbreaking, zero. So um you know, that's impactful, you know, to us and hopefully for all of us. Continue to provide, you know, services and, and you know, access to a young Latinas to get into these. Internships and to these certification programs and, you know, really do the outreach, you know, to. For us. Thank you very much, our women's system, myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
And while you were talking, I think one of the opportunities is certainly with the. The uh, the young students and starting at that early age is, is tremendous. Uh the other is when you go into. Uh some of the, the workplaces like Hiller Farms, there's a lot of women uh that are working there that we could connect them to the Megatronics program. So I think those are opportunities for us that. Maybe we're leaving on the table. So I, I certainly appreciate the feedback.
Thank, thank you. And then so let me just. Finish with public comments and then we'll come back for final comments from the council. So any, any additional public comments from those joining us here? Okay, then let me take it out to Zoom, uh public comments and I do see two. So I did see uh Mr. Corolejo, you can unmute yourself. Can you unmute yourself? Okay, well, I'll come back to you. Uh Eva, I see Eva, you can unmute yourself. Eva, can you hear us?
Hi, good evening. Hi, good evening, everyone. Um. I just wanted to, just to give props to Hartnell College. I'm excited that they're here in South County because we have so many, so many, so many students that. Actually, you know, use our facility, our facilities, not only just facilities in Solid Ed, but also in King City. So you know, I thank you guys, I applaud you guys for coming to Solid Ed. And you know, once again, we're doing great things in Solid Ed and you're making it happen in Solid Ed. So again, shout out to you guys. I am so happy that. Hartnell is here and you know, uh, thank you.
Thank you Eva for your comments. And I do see, I, there was a handout about Mr. Franco, I also just want to make sure that I had acknowledged him. He wasn't able to log on and I don't see him anymore. Steven, can you confirm that is correct?
Yeah, I, I, I see him. I didn't want to say it anymore.
Okay, so uh Frank, did you want to make a comment?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now, yes.
What I was gonna ask is, well, I don't know. Um I'm sorry I didn't make your guys' invitation for F and M. Um you guys extended invitation to get some like information about, well, you know, what, what to teach or. Stuff like that. And I'm sorry I didn't make that meeting, I was busy, but. I think um with the electric cars coming in. What would be pretty good, I think, is that a, a basic electrical class? And then an advanced electrical class because those electrical classes are good. Um. And what they do is they just like get you ready for what's coming. And you know, you, you also have to know, you have to, you also have to be pretty good with electrical now on. On vehicles and diesel. Diesel's gum. I, I like diesel. Like I got an A A out in. Evergreen College, like in ninety-three, I became a mechanic and I never stopped from there. And now we have a business. So. We've also. Probably mentored like twenty people, male and female. So my question also too is like, how? Would it be to help undocumented get into that kind of school? Because I've had like probably five people that were interested, but like. Oh, I don't have my visa, I don't, you know, I haven't got my visa yet or I haven't got my papers. I don't know if I can enroll. Is there anything like that that? That's, they can be helped with?
Thank you for, thank you for your comments.
Yeah, sorry, my name is Ram, uh student man, I work with President Gutierrez. Uh yes, we can of course uh um uh have, we have a lot of undocumented students that are at Hartwell College already. So. Uh they're welcome to come and sign on to any of the programs that we offer and uh. We'll be happy to welcome them and support them in whatever way we can. Yes.
Thank you so much. Anyone that has questions can, can connect directly with Hartnell College for that.
And, and we also have uh an area that we call, or department called Vitasa. And so for students to feel welcomed and, and maybe they don't want to go to. Admission and, and that's an area where they can give service and it happens.
Yeah, tha- thank you so much. So with that, let me bring it back for final comments from the council so we can move on. I know we have other items on the agenda, but. So just final comments please and then we can um, we can move on to our next item.
Yes, my final comments are just, you know, these programs are great, you know, Hartnell, I know the school district also. The Solid Ed School District also um does career days and, and different internships and stuff. Um but I think also it's important, especially now in, you know, we started talking about women, women in. In the industry and a male-dominated industry, I think it's important. Um you know, also as, as parents, if we know mechanics or. Or um what was it? Maybe, maybe something I can't even remember. Thank you, Megatronics. Um but I think it's important for us to encourage that in our, in our children and our females, especially we see them. That they have an interest in it. Um I know uh, you know, my daughter sometimes does oil changes. She bought a new car on her own and um my husband helped her install her engine. So I think it's, you know, again, just very important whether it's, you know, D S deals, dads, stepdads, um. You know, a- anyone, it could even be a female that knows mechanics, just that for us to also support them because I think it also starts. At home so that they could feel that empowerment because they are able to do whatever they set their mind to.
Thank you.
To the chair.
Your final comments?
Yes, yeah, just to follow up with uh Frank um question. Uh that's one of the things why I'm so proud of being, I was also graduated from um Harnell. Is that uh this program where undocumented people have been, having in place for years. And a lot of our people have been able to go in and take their education and, and not be stopped for anything. And thank you so much. For continuing that, that program and making more effort for people to make it easier for them. Because once you get there is crazy. The um. Never mind. But thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you so much and thank you for the work that you do. I had the opportunity to finally work um with, at Hartnell um for a couple of. Probably thought it was only gonna be a couple of months and it turned out to be almost two years. Uh but thank you so much. I know your team is amazing and you guys do some great work. So thank you and we're uh excited about what's. The future of Hartnell here in Solid Ed. Thank you.
Thank you for the invitation.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, we will move on to our final presentation of tonight. Oh no, we have two more. Sorry, we have two more. Okay, so our next presentation is by the Solid Ed Mission Recreation District. Executive Director Francis Binksen, uh he will give us a brief presentation regarding the diving block project. And thank you also for submitting. The PowerPoint uh with all of that great information in events.
Good evening. I have uh my board chair, Pete Massa with me tonight as well. And I invited the council. Last year about this time, I guess maybe April, to come to a um swim meet at the pool. So this was really. Uh Ms. Hunter and Mr. Howard approached and asked for some ARPA reporting. So we put together um a formal report and we just have a few comments about the project. So. Did you think Mayor Velazquez and the senior members of the council, Francis Binksen, the executive director for the Solid Ed Mission Rec District. It's been some time since I've seen you. And uh there have been some significant developments uh that have unfolded since then. First, I'm a. Proud parent to a ten-month-old baby girl.
Congratulations.
Yes. Uh and then also I'm pleased to inform you that our district received a legislative earmark from Senator Cabeiro's office. And we're hoping the state will release the funding at some point in the future so we can do some.
Almost there.
Um resource conservation capital improvements. And then, and also we successfully completed this diving blocks project, the purchase and installation, installation of the diving blocks. We hosted our first inaugural Solid Ed High School Swim Meet and that made a historic milestone. Uh this accomplishment was made possible through your collaborative efforts through the council, the school district. Uh we had a community partner who donated and it was the council's bold decision to match funds with the school district that really made this project happen. Uh enclosed in your report is the details of the execution of this project and it fulfills your ARPA uh reporting requirements. Um the project originated through the passionate advocacy of a dedicated group of community members and parents who I invited. But they were unavailable, you know, they have swim practice. And their relentless dedication and determination, they really um advocated and got support from the council and the school district. Um as I said, we had another community partner who came in with a donation, the other competitive swim program. And so not only were we able to do the diving blocks, but we also were able to do some additional enhancements. Including storage for the diving blocks and the high school swim team. Uh additional seating to accommodate all the people that are coming to the pool for the swim meets. Um and all within our existing infrastructure. Um and again, this really would not have been possible without the council's investment, the school district's investment and the partnership. And while our designation as a special district may suggest that we're self-sufficient, the reality is our funding framework. Is inherently constrained, hindering our capacity to offset escalating operating costs. Uh or to expand our services and remain um with affordable programming. Uh for instance, our annual tax revenue constant te- constitutes a mere third of what your measure S uh funding for your. Uh city of Solid Ed Rec Department. Gets and it primarily, well, it only covers facility maintenance, employee salaries and then a loan for a past renovation. Um we hope that this was the first of future partnerships. And we take immense pride in being a partner and uh this collaborative effort. Um underscoring the transformative power, power of partnership, emboldening community enhancements. It exemplifies our collective potential to achieve a remarkable outcome through cooperation. Complimently, the Rec District Board uh intends to propose a resolution or proclamation. To formalize and further incentivize joint efforts across our organizations. Um and encouraging pooling our resources and capitalizing on future grant opportunities. Uh and community development initiatives. As stewards of recreation and wellness. Uh we aspire to be recognized as valued partners to the city and in shaping this community's future endeavors. We also, I also reached out to the staff now for a potential facilities use agreement. So I'm hoping. That we get to move forward with that. And I just really want to sincerely thank you for your unwavering support. Through this endeavor and through um and we anticipating even early hope that you will support our future. The forthcoming resolution or proclamation signifying our shared commitment to continued collaboration. And community enrichment for Solid Ed. And then Pete's got some comments?
All right, to the mayor and the city council. Uh thank you for your contribution to the enhancement of our community's competitive swimming programs and the maintenance of our lower community swimming pool. Indeed, the journey of this project has been somewhat unconventional, beginning with grassroots activism and advocacy of parents and students. Seeking assistance from their community. It underscores a profound truth that often critical issues are brought to light by the passion. And commitment of our citizens. We trust that the council shares our vision of investing in an institution. Like the community pool with a rich sixty-year history of providing valuable recreation programs. And thirty-five decades of stewardship over that pool. As we confront the financial and economic, economic challenges facing our pool, we recognize the urgent need for diversified revenue streams. District staff is diligently pursuing opportunities, contracts, programs and reduced expenditures that may be required. While we have endeavored to engage with the city on numerous occasions, our intent has never been to seek a bailout. But rather to explore collaborative solutions that benefit our entire community. We are committed to ensuring accessibility to both facilities and the use of all services, like the community center gym. And swimming pool for lessons for all residents. Yet the reality remains that the recreation district shoulders its responsibility largely on its own. Despite our overtures, we have regrettably not received the level of support and collaboration from the city of Solid Ed that we hold for. It is imperative to recognize that while our civic organizations may bear different names. And operate under distinct governing bodies, our shared purpose remains rooted in serving the same constituents of the city of Solid Ed. In conclusion, we appeal to the council to recognize the importance of fostering opportunities for genuine partnership and collaboration. Together, we can overcome the challenges that may lie ahead and continue to fulfill our shared mission of enchanting the quality of life. For all residents of Solid Ed, especially our youth and senior citizens. We will be bringing a formal resolution for the council to consider. We stand ready and willing to collaborate as partners in service to our community's collective well-being. Thank you again for your partnership and collaboration on the diving block project. And also your sincere consideration and commitment to our community's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much for that. So we, you, there was a lot said. Thank you for the report. Uh I know that there is some comments I have um and questions as well. But let me uh let me take it out to the public. Since we did it for the other ones, I want to make sure that we're being transparent and we're doing it for all as well. And then we'll bring it back to the council if there's any questions. So uh at this point, I'll ask any members of the public that are joining us here via Zoom, if they have any questions or comments in regards to. Presentation number two that um was just presented um in, in regards to Solid Ed Mission, Mission Recreation District. Okay, see none? Then I will take those, I will take it out to Zoom now to see if there's any members of our public. Okay, I do see one hand raised by Mr. Franco. I hope you can unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now, yes.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
What, we saw the committee. I don't know, it was a little year ago, but I was gonna ask. I know we talked about like. And.
Hello, Brian, can I interrupt you for a bit? Uh so you're coming in and out? So we can hear. It's kind of breaking out.
Okay.
That's better.
Is it possible for them to get the chance to, is it possible for them to get the chance to look at? Taxes because I don't think they ever got to get a chance to look at the taxes. Because um that was ever raised, is that possible? And then grant writing, grant writing, like is it possible to help them with grant writing? That's it, that's all.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on. Uh thank you. So we got, we got those comments. So I do have, oh. Okay, so. Uh Eva, Eva, you can unmute yourself.
You know, I do apologize. I may be breaking out in and out like uh, Brian, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so I just wanted to make a public comment, you know, um. Being part of the Rec District, that was my go-to when swimming when I was younger. So. I wanted to, you know, if there was any way to, you know, support the Rec District because they have been doing great things. And applaud to Francis and the board for putting things together and also Andy, you know, shout out to that too, but. Was there, I know that there is a tax um that we contribute to the Rec. I don't know if we, it's been, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Francis, it's been since nineteen sixty. That the tax hasn't been raised and it's been just at that um tax rate. Uh, there was, I'm not sure if the council can, we can try to rectify to increase that, to help with, um, with the REC District, and thank you.
Thank you, Eva, for your comments. Okay, so seeing no additional comments, then we'll close that public comment period and bring it back to the council um, for comments. And so I'll start with councilwoman, uh, Mayor Procham Coralejo.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to, to thank Pete and Francis, um, for, for being here and giving the presentation, but also I really felt it was kind of like, um, uh, back then when, when you started, you know, talking about upgrading, I think I was in a position where I got to see the hard work that you guys do, both as a councilwoman and also, um, back then I was on the board for the parents' swim club. Um, and so I, I again did get, you know, to see all that perspective. Also, I was also on the task, task force, um, that you guys did, and so um, you know, I think for me, what, what I like is that you, you put in the work, like you're, you're passionate about what you do, which I'm glad because swimming is a lifesaving skill that, you know, everyone, uh, should know. And, you know, I, I, one of the things that stood out to me, it wasn't just meetings where we would go and just talk and nothing gets done, you know, you're just, it's all administrative, no, like I remember the last meeting we went to, you actually had um, the architect there and you had options like, oh, I have option A and, you know, showing, uh, I guess the upgrades that, that were going to be made to to the pool and the REC Center building and option two, option three, so we were able to visualize. And you made copies for everyone and we're all looking through it and it like literally broke down the budget to us. It was, uh, you know, it was real. Um, and, and I think, you know, because of all your hard work, I think it was easy for, you know, when a lot, when you have a lot of different, um, people working together, sometimes it could be difficult because we all have different thoughts, different, um, personalities, but I really commend you for, you know, being able to get everyone together, the school district, the city, um, the, the parents. And, and I don't know how you did it to manage all that, um, but you were able to, and you know, now we see the fruits and I did go to that first swim meet and I'm totally bummed her, my daughter, um, did not stay with swimming. Um, but it was really an honor to see, you know, her classmates and, and to be able to have that meet in Solid Ed. So just wanted to, um, thank you guys for that.
Thank you, Councilmember, um, Cabrera?
Yeah, I, um, I was, uh, looking at your presentation, the pictures and everything, I was thinking about. You, you mentioned that it's been, that is the future of, uh, of our cities, also the past. I took lessons there, my knees was probably a problem long time ago. And I can see the people sitting down and I can remember the time in which we didn't have chairs. And I was, I stood the whole time right there because we didn't have enough chairs for everybody. And, uh, the progress has been slower, but I think that, um, at least from a bar, how could I say no to something that, that brings so much memories? Uh, my children also took, uh, lessons there. And, uh, I mean, it will be a no-brainer, right? This is one of those, um, those things that, that function us and, and that is, that, I'm gonna try and translate in Spanish. In Spanish, we say, mm, ticaleres tiene cosquillas. Just hoping to see if he or she loves. And those are the little things that, that we, we, we put our children in, in that, in those situations. And they might or may not like it. But if you don't, if you don't have that, that opportunity, you will never know. And the work that you guys do is tremendous. So thank you so much and keep doing it. Keep doing, you're doing a fantastic job with that.
Well, Francis, thank you so much. Pete, thank you so much. And thank you for the board as well. I, I have a couple of comments. I want to address some of the, um, just some of the comments that were made as well, but let me start off by saying I think the pool is really significant to everybody. It's fifty years old, right? Since it was built. You know, I remember, I think at that time, every fourth grader went to the pool, right? Because we had swim lessons back then. Um, and my brothers and all of us, you know, enjoyed going to the pool. Um, I had, one of my sons was actually a lifeguard at the pool, so, and my other son was in the swim team um, and the sharks at that time. So I know, you know, many of us have stories about the pool and this is, you know, it's, it's a very important, um, very, very significant for our community, you know, we can say it's a landmark, right? Because it's the only indoor pool really within our corridor, so it is really, uh, it's really important and really important as part of the recreational services that are offered to our families. So obviously I think there's no question that the pool is really significant to all of us. How we get into the financial side of what we support, I think that's a different discussion, right? Because I think um, everybody wants to make sure that the pool continues to be viable for our current generation and for our future generations. And how do we make sure that that happens? And, you know, and I just want to say also in terms of the allocation of funding from Senator Caballero, I know as our district representative, um, as our district director, you know, I was really pushing like, hey, the, the pool's significant and this is why. And so I'm very proud that we were able to get that, but I know it's not enough, that there's obviously a lot more. Um, but I do want to go back to talk about a couple of things that were brought up and I'll, I'll start with the, the taxes because I know that was brought up by a couple of people and I know we've discussed that in the past. And I do want to say also, as, as your mayor for the city of Solid Ed, I also sit on the LACCO board, Monterey County LACCO board, and I know that there's been discussions and I know that we have a municipal service review that's going to be coming and it's going to be working with um, the, the, the board to be able to look at the financials and, but, but also I think for me, one of my, my discussions was how do we look at incrementing those taxes that have not been, um, have not been increased for many, many years, right? And what, what is the, what is the process? Because the city doesn't control that. So I just want to make sure our, our residents are clear in terms of our jurisdiction over the tax portion of it. Um, we can support, we definitely are a partner to support for that to happen, but the city doesn't, the city doesn't, um, govern that process. It really comes through that municipal service review process and looking at, working with the LACCO board to make sure that we do have a mechanism to ensure what is the process to increase that and how do we do it? Because as I said earlier with Hartnell College, our families, you know, despite some of, despite some of the financial challenges are, are really supportive of activities for our youth. So then I just want to make sure that I clear, clarify that because I know that is instrumental in terms of financial viability and how do we support you um, as the board to be able to ensure that the county does work with you and how to, what, what other partners can we bring in to ensure that that review does happen and, and how much can we increase it, right? To make sure that that's a viable opportunity and then the timeline, how soon can we do that, right? Everything with governments sometimes takes longer, but can we advocate for it to be, you know, to look at different timelines? And I think that's something that we all can support in doing. Uh, the, uh, the other thing, and I just want to say, and Pete, I know that you had mentioned that not really feeling supported and this is a true partnership. So I really want to address that point because I want to be clear in terms of what's being said and what we've done and where we go from here, right? Because at the end of the day, it's about being able to have a dialogue of what is needed and maybe different perceptions in terms of what, what work we've done or not. Um, I know obviously, you know, I was part of the board with councilmember Torres when we were talking about how do we structure it so our community doesn't care whether it owns, the pool's owned by the city or not, or by, by the district. They just want to swim, right? And they just want those opportunities. So I know there was a lot of dialogue about different structures, different financial structures, what made sense, what may not. The board decided they were going to go ahead and, you know, they did a survey, they, you know, that was my understanding. And then there was decided that we were, the board was going to go their direction. So I guess I just a little bit taken aback in terms of the support portion of it and where we're not partners. Um, and, but, but the other thing is that we do have two appointments on the board. So I want to make sure that the people that are representing us, that are city appointments um, are really, you know, that we as a council have the opportunity to understand, well, what is it that the board, it needs, right? What are some of those discussions? You know, how does that come back to us as a board? Because I don't hear anything. I don't, you know, I don't go to the meetings. And so I want to just kind of make sure that those appointments and if we need to look at who's being appointed to those boards, so that way you really have a better um, opportunity to ensure that the representation from the council is really providing the support that your board needs, right? Um, and, and so I think for me, it's just, you know, wanting to understand that we are communicating. Um, and in terms of additional partnership opportunities. Yeah, and I know, um, Francis, you talked about you, some of the facility use agreements and stuff. So I just want to make sure that we're, we're, we're listening, but we're also looking at what are those opportunities that we can partner. I know before we talked about a pass, right? That kind of like didn't happen. Is that something that we can go back and revisit or, you know, what can we do? So I think in that spirit of partnerships is we are here to look at, you know, opportunities and solutions, and I know you guys are too. So I just want to make sure we clear that and it's how do we move forward? So those are my questions. So I just on the appointment process, so the two appointees that are on the board, I, I, I want to make sure we're getting information that you need from us and the support that you need from us. So we still have Mikey and is Mikey still on the board? No.
No, you currently have a vacancy.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you currently have a vacancy. Ms. Hunter indicated that after the special election would not be, when we'd be looking at that appointment. Pete is one of your appointees.
Okay, so Veronica's not, so Veronica, okay, Veronica.
We have three appointments.
Okay, so we have three, okay. Okay, Pete, so you are our dialogue.
But it sounds like a reconvening of that. Maybe it would be really beneficial and when we talk about like a resolution, it's you know, a spirit of partnership. It's like having a letter of support saying, you know, city is with the REC District. I appreciate the clarification on the financial part because, um, aside from this project, we don't get any financial support from the city. Um, so the, it, the comment about us getting a third of our, the tax apportionment uh, was just to give some perspective, because now you guys are managing a recreation budget and you know what it takes. And when you think about that, when you think about four hundred thousand dollars supporting an indoor swimming pool, it is mind-blowing what we get done, right? And we are thinking of all the different revenue streams, uh, grants. We'd love to be partners with the city on grants. Uh, we are looking at tax opportunities, but that takes a significant investment and it's difficult for our board to make the decision to pull money from our operating funds to move on a ballot measure or a bond measure or something like that. Because, uh, keeping the programs open for people, let alone as affordable as we possibly can, is so important to our board. So I think after the mayor's comments, you know, we would love to reconvene of the subcommittee and, um, to figure out what our, what our partnership looks like in the future, you know? And this was such a great experience for us. I think we were just really inspired and we'd like to see more.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So thank you. So we'll, we'll, we'll look at that to see if we have to agendize that for the next time to be able to bring that back to resurrect the, uh, subcommittee that we had. I'm looking at, you know, new, new, um, new opportunities. And so, yeah, no, absolutely. And I know, Pete, you always say that at the end of the day, it's about our families and our kids, right? You know, being able to see those kids that when they had the, the, the blocks, the dive blocks and the family had enjoyed that locally, they didn't have to travel somewhere else and the kids can practice here and can have their needs here. That's absolutely what we're here for and we, we share that together and how do we make sure that we move forward to be able to ensure that both entities can function and provide those opportunities for our, for our current and future generations. Thank you.
And if you have a winter swim meet, they're, uh, it's an electric experience. There's one on Friday at three thirty. Uh, there's one on May twelfth and one on May eighteenth, yeah, or nineteenth.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
They're at three thirty and all of you fired up.
Yeah.
Which screaming, it's just amazing, so.
It's amazing. My Sunday water polo was one of the best experiences of going to those meets, so. Yeah, thank you. Okay, well, thank you so much for that. So we'll come back, Megan, to take a look at that, our resurrection of that, at House of. Great, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so with that, then we have our last presentation and it's the contract engineer, um, Mr. Leon Gomez, who will give us a presentation and update on the Monterey Salinas Transit bus stop improvement, fixed route circulator.
Good evening, Mayor Council members, city managers, city attorney. How are you doing? Thank you. All right, we'll be on the time. Hey. Um, good evening, happy to be here. Give a little presentation. Tonight, we're presenting on the city of Solid Ed, the updated on Monterey Salinas MST, um, bus stop improvements, fixed route circulator, and online should be Ms. Michelle Overmeyer, Director of Planning and Innovation with MST. We have allotted some time at the end of the presentation, uh, for us to answer any questions that the council may have regarding the project. So we'll start with a quick overview of Monterey Salinas Transit. The district was created by state law AB six forty-four, was formed in July of twenty ten. District members include a number of agencies, both on the peninsula, central coast, and South County. Uh, Carmel, Del Rio, Gonzales, Greenfield, King City Marina, City Monterey, Pacific Grove, Salinas, San City, Seaside, Solid Ed, and the County of Monterey. A board of directors with a representative from each member jurisdiction governs the agency and appoints the general manager. MST serves a hundred and sixty-one square mile area of Monterey County, northern San Luis Obispo County and southern Santa Cruz County with thirty-six routes serving an estimated population of four hundred and thirty-two thousand people. MST's mission is advocating and delivering quality public transportation as a leader within the community and the industry. And MST has approved a plan to create new routes and services through South Monterey County cities. Scope of work and phasing. The scope of work includes the development of bus stop design plans in support of implementing fixed route public transit circulator services within the South County cities of Solid Ed, Greenfield, and Gonzales. And MST's priority of work is follows. There's priority phase one improvements that will be implemented for the realignment of line twenty-three, that's King City to Salinas service. Priority phase two improvements, which will implement work that can be accomplished quickly for a new circulator line within the city. And future priority phase three improvements. Those are longer-term planning efforts that will require MST and city coordination, and those are not included in the current scope of work. On this slide, we've got a map of the city of Solid Ed and the bus stop locations. Currently, there are a total of nineteen locations proposed throughout the city of Solid Ed for priority phase one, with the remaining fifteen priority phase two. Plans for priority phase one and two bus stops are currently in design. Bus stop improvements typically include striping, signage, and minor concrete improvements throughout the city. And the design process has included site visits and field investigation to confirm existing conditions, meetings in coordination with city staff, MST staff, review of both private and public development projects and city projects to confirm locations. Now, this is during the design process, just to make a point that leading up to the design process, MST, um, conducted a significant amount of development of the bus stop locations, field evaluations, site visits, meeting of the city over the course of a couple of years to develop the locations. And construction is anticipated to begin by summer of this year, twenty twenty-four. So with that, that's the end of the presentation. Um, I'm open for questions. Again, Michelle Overmeyer with MST is also available if, uh, there are any questions. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much, Leon, for that presentation. Uh, thank you, Michelle, also for being here. So let me, let me take it out to the public first and then I'll come back for comments from the council. So anyone around the public um, that is joining us here in our chambers would like to make any, uh, comments, a question in comparison to the presentation number three?
Just really quick, you know, as a mother of two students that attend Cardinal College, every time I go by, I see them in the bus stop and others from two current, right, the current bus stop. And I, I think my, um, concern is the access. You know, so I'm really, um, stoked about having seen that there isn't going to be additional stoppage and throughout, that's going to increase the access to our students to be able to go, um, to this, this Salinas campus. Um, to this, this Salinas campus, more accessible. Good thing.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Okay, see now that I will take it out to those that are joining us here Zoom. Okay, seeing none, then I'll close up all the comments and I'll bring it back to council for any questions or comments and I'll start with councilwoman. With Mayor Chanco Ralhan.
I mean, I just, uh, first of all, I would thank you for the presentation, um. I honestly, it was really easy on the eyes. I enjoyed every slide for some, uh, odd reason. Um, but I did want to, um. Just, uh, thank you for, I was looking at the stops. That we have on here and I love the fact that it literally encompasses our whole city. I think even going out to Nestles. Um, and, and Moscoches and with that, Davida, De Alice's dinner. Yeah, I feel like that's perfect. Um, uh, I know there was some concerns in, in the past. Um, there have been, and you know, again, I really like it. I think the only, and I don't know if this is already a hundred percent set or if it's still open for. Um, you know, for suggestions, but I think my only thing, thing that I would actually add, seeing because we got so many complaints and even, uh, as. As, uh, as early as about a couple of months ago, I had, um, a senior message me. And they were concerned about, I guess there was a, a stop, a bus stop that was near the senior, um, housing that we have on under museum. And granted, there is the rights program also that will go to their door, but I don't think that they all feel comfortable. You know, calling, using a phone, calling and, and setting up, or maybe they get anxious having to. Take so many steps to get a ride. Um, so if it's not set in stone yet, I think that's, um, you know, just my, my biggest concern. Is just, uh, the seniors to be able to have a stop that's convenient for them. Um, trying to think what else. Yeah, I think, uh, besides that, that's all I have. I'm really excited to see that, you know. The MST is, is going more electrical, which I believe our mayor has talked on because she does it on that board, so. Um, you know, it's good to see that you guys are being environmentally friendly, um, when there was, um. Changes that have to be made on the routes, which I think one of them was raised by, um, some of our business owners on Front Street. They all came. Here to the chamber, um, you know, they were taken into consideration and so I. I love all the stops, just would like to add one.
Okay.
But yeah, so thank you.
Well, thank you for your comments and any input.
Sure, certainly.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a question. How come there? Five stop by letters with the street? And then there is none in, at Hornell and the park. Cause there, there is a whole, uh, space in, in water that is not, that would have any, any stops there.
Sure, um, Michelle, would you like to answer that or I can dig stuff with it?
Sure, I can answer that. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, perfect.
Good evening, council members. Michelle Overmeyer, Director of Planning and Innovation with Monterey Salinas Transit. Um, as, as, as Leon said, that there has been a lot of, um. Planning that has gone into designing this route. So this is about six years in the making now. Um, and part of that included coordination with Heartnow College. And so we do have an existing bus stop in front of their campus and so that's already in place. We just put in a shelter. Um, I want to say within the last four weeks. Uh, so we don't need to do any more work in that location. So that's why you see a big gap there because it's already existing.
So these are the proposed, uh, stuff.
Correct.
Okay, alright. That doesn't change the ones that we already have.
Excuse me?
That they do not include the ones that we have.
These are all only proposed, correct?
Cause then in the front, the outside, we already have two, is that, then we have, uh, in Sinal and Front.
Correct. So what you see on the order down here are all your stops.
So just to clarify for the council, um, because I sit on the MST board, I can care and so. I just clarification, I know Leon, you're doing the presentation because he's been the, the Harrison Associates, the engineering firm that. Was retained to be able to work with Gonzalez and us, uh, because all of our south county cities are doing this. King City already had implemented there. So what we look at as part of the board, um. Is a comprehensive analysis that was conducted, you know, as Michelle said, probably like three, four years that it's been in the planning. Um, and south county, what was planned because we really wanted to look at equity in terms of transportation. And not, so this is going to be a circulator, but it doesn't, but we still have the, the fixed route, right? The buses that go to, um, Salinas and all that. Still going to be the bus, the line twenty-three, that's still going to happen. But these new bus stops, our bus stops is part of that whole equity and inclusion to be able to ensure that. Our residents had a, a different access to transportation. And so this circulator is going to be in, in the city because we found that a lot of. From the feedback and multiple, multiple, multiple community feedback and engagement was. That there was a big need to be able to offer these transportation systems. We currently have the on-call service. At some point, on-call is going to go because the circulator is going to take that place because now we're going to have. I mean, which was great because now every thirty minutes, we know the bus is going to be coming, right? Here's a route of the bus. Throughout our city and people know, now our residents know, hey, if I want to go to the grocery store, I get it every thirty minutes, right? So I have more access to transportation and I think this is what the concept was and I know for, for, um. For both of you, I think, uh, so this was something that was, came back to the council already. We, uh, the, the, I think the plans are about ninety percent complete in terms of this, the plan. So. I think anything, uh, and you can correct me, Megan, if I'm wrong, but. Anything additional than what's been invested, and this is not coming from the city money, this is from MST. Um, any additional designs or changes, and I think at this point, eh, the, the community feedback has been obtained already. Uh, but any changes have to come, are going to be at the expense of the city because this, this is already. The circulator route has already been developed and in design and the contracts have been already executed. For the existing design that we have. I just want to be clear, you know, cause I, I don't want to be any. Like, we're going to redesign this. It's, here's what the design is going to look like. Uh, and here are the, the, the bus stops and we hope, we were hoping to get this done by a year ago. You know, that this would have already been implemented, like it has been in King City. Uh, but this is going to be really transformative for all of our south county cities.
Uh, to the chair, but, um, still, it's a question. I'm asking a question. I know that there's, it's, it's in there. I just, uh, have a question because I have seen people. More people walking in the area, in the area of Second and Palm. All that in, in Palm, Monterey going towards Eighth Street. People walking with children, walking with, uh, with, um, groceries and stuff than I have seen on West. West Street. So yes, I, I, most of the people that walk on West, the West Street are doing exercises. So I assume, and correct me if I'm wrong, that if you are just walking. You don't need the bus that much, but if you go this way, you have people with groceries and children and you probably need a little bit more. I'm not trying to change any, 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 uh, plans that are having already replaced. I'm just, it's my, my concern that, that it was, look at, look, look at the way that it is and it's not. From my perspective, it's not considered in the whole area of, uh, six, seven and eighth street. So all that people have to walk seven, seven blocks to take a bus. And that's, that's, that's my, my comment is not, not trying to change anything. But I, but I didn't should go. I think it's a valid concern that, that if, if, because I live. Through that, in that area, and I think that a lot of people will walk through, uh, through that area to, to do their, their activities and. And if they want, my, my assumption is that if they walk to the bingo. They probably don't have car to go to Salinas and it would be a good idea not to walk ten blocks. To take a bus when it could be a little bit more.
Through, through the chair, um, and I apologize that I missed, um, maybe this was in the presentation, but, um. There's a lot that goes into establishing, um, the bus routes that in addition to. You know, trying to find the cert, the right service points, there's traffic considerations and, um. How it would affect the flow of traffic. There's some planning considerations. There was some outreach done that. That, um, caused some of the shifts to the bus stop. So the, the one, the thing that was settled on here has. You know, data, uh, involved in terms of service points, um, looking at time. Uh, timeframes, looking at, um, traffic. So there, there are other factors that might have resulted in things that have shifted around that are in addition to just, you know. Of course, the feedback is helpful, but I think as, uh, as was, um, stated that this is. Pretty far down the pipe, that the, the plans are done, um, at some point. MST regularly evaluates their service, um. Service times and everything and, and from time to time, they do make adjustments. So perhaps. You know, once it's operational, uh, there'll be more data that can be compiled that may, may result in some. Uh, refinements, I, not to speak for Michelle or Leon, but, um, I, I know that it's. So that, you know, having worked with MST for many years when I worked in Salinas, um. Uh, you know, and this is a great, you know, having a circulator like this is amazing, um, to have in South County, so.
To, to the chair, just to explain why my sudden concern is because I just, I, I read in, in one of the other. Items that we have, that we are planning a calming effect on traffic in, in West Street. So I am looking at this and I have those cuatro, uh, four stops. And we're going to create a calming effect plus four bus stops. So I'm in that, in that same area, that is probably the same, the same street that people. Uh, in the future in, you know, Monte will use to come to, into the town. So I'm concerned that all of those things were not considered when this happened. I know that we cannot change. What can I change it? I, I understand that. I have to hear it so many times, but, uh, but, uh, um. You see my concern because now we have a new plan that is going to affect that same street where all these bus stops are. And I'm wondering how that's going to affect the regular traffic and the future traffic that is going to happen.
So can I, council member, uh, Carrera, thank you so much for stating that. So one point and I'll just speak to that really quickly, Leon, and if you allow me to is. One is, um, uh, you're right, point well taken, because I think, I know I'm, Michelle's here and I think what we've talked about in the board is. You know, we wanted to put this in place. It's the first time, but we're also going to do an assessment. Is it really serving? You know, is this route really serving the, the people that we intended to serve, right? Because if we have a route and at the end we have. We come back and say, you know what, it, it, it's not, then what, what needs to happen? So we can refine it because I think one of the goals. For MST is really to provide that ridership and people really to get out of their cars or not utilize their cars or some people don't have cars, right? To be able to utilize the transit system. So that will be part of the, uh, once these are installed because it's. It's new. This is like, we're pivoting this, right? It's new for, for us, um, and it's pretty exciting, but we'll be looking at that. I think when we presented, when this was presented and it's been some time ago, there was like three different models that MST presented and they looked at different data and, and so. You know, I acknowledge, uh, thank you for the feedback in terms of we have all of this. The other thing that I want to say, what MST is also the team and I know Michelle's here is. As we're looking at new developments, it's also looking at the, um, I know they call it the, um. T, what is it? The transportation oriented development, the TOD? To be able to look at, if we're going to develop in the new area, then how are you also including transportation there, right? So as you're developing the infrastructure, transportation. Uh, access to transportation is also part of the development, so it's not an afterthought. So that'll also alleviate or help with. Making sure that transit is part and how does it continue to allow people to utilize transit more efficiently in our city. So I know those are some of the things that with the MST stuff, I can say that, cause now I've been on the, I've been on board for quite some time now. Have learned more about how important it is to really make sure that transit is at the beginning. So. I just want to say that and acknowledge your comments on that.
Um, through the chair.
Yeah.
Hi, thank you. Um, just, uh, going along with, uh, council member Carrera's, um, comments, I. Actually didn't notice that until he mentioned it and, and yeah, I, I totally agree. I think that our most, um. Vulnerable, uh, populations, I want to say are our seniors and those, um. You know, that perhaps don't have a vehicle, so they would take MST because they need that transportation so that, you know, it's hard to keep an eye on your children. Like you said, they're walking and maybe they're carrying heavy things, having, carrying bags of things. Um, and so it's not so much for, you know, being environmentally friendly, which that's also a great, a great reason to take the bus, right? But these are people that actually need it. Um, you know, it's, it's those that live maybe on Seventh Street, Eighth Street. It's those that are seniors that. Perhaps don't want to use the phone or can't use the phone to, um, to call. And so, you know, we're here to, um, advocate for. Our residents. And so I don't know, um, you know, outreach was done. I'm not sure. I'm not had to definitely report any specific outreach to our seniors of the. Uh, senior social. I'm not sure, um, if that was done enough, but I just, you know. Um, again, I, I thank you guys. I, I love, like I said, that wraps all around our, our city, um. But I do feel that are most vulnerable or most likely to need these, um, services. Do not have stops near their home.
Thank, thank you. Thank you. So thank, thank you for those comments and there was, uh, I think everybody received. If not, Michelle, we can resend all of the, um, outreach that was done. So there was significant outreach. So to your point. Um, you might not have been part of those conversations, but there was significant outreach that was done. For the past two and a half years to our communities and it came back to the city council. We looked at different models. Um, you know, I can't recall in terms of the different, two different models that we saw on this one, the one was the one that was selected. So this has been in the works for quite some time and I want to make sure that, I, you know, the, the comments about our seniors. That's what we look at. Measure Q in the, the county that approved those dollars. More for being able to look at the transportation of our seniors and that's really critical to MST. So. I just want to assure our residents, as your representative on MST. You know, our seniors are considered and we do take that into account, um, because. You, this is how we look at the lens of equity and how we make sure that transportation is being made available. And if, you know, uh, after the assessment is conducted and once this is implemented and there's assessments done and we can come back and say. You know, maybe that's something that we need to add different stops and we have to come back as, as a council and. And approve that and, you know, budget for that and see how we can, um, continue to provide equitable services. Um, for our community. So I just want to make sure that I, I say that because it's not dismissing our senior population and. Um, there's funding obviously for that. We still have the MST on-call until whatever time it stops. And that's another service to our community residents that may not be able to, um, access transportation. They can call that service. Um, and they come and they pick them up at their doorstep, bring them back at their doorstep. And I know that there's other transportation systems with other partners that are looking at, how do we make sure that we provide transportation? To individuals, especially our vulnerable population. So all of that has just, I, I want to make it clear, um, to our residents as well. As to our council that that is part of what the dialogue has been on those boards. And as your representative on the board, I want to assure you that. I am looking out for our residents. I am looking out for our seniors. Um, and I, you know, I'm excited to have been instrumental in approving and moving the circulator forward because. We didn't have this before and so we hope that as, um, this is implemented that. You know, we can continue to assess and, and do better, right?
Oh, we certainly appreciate everybody's input. Um, Michelle, if you want to add to the conversation?
Yeah, um, I do have a few things I did want to mention or follow up on. Um, so first of all, Megan is on point that a lot goes into citing the stops. We look at surrounding infrastructure that's already in place because MST doesn't typically put in sidewalks. Um, in order to install new bus stops, we have to meet the standards of the Americans with Disabilities Act. So sidewalks have to be a certain width. Uh, we have our safety team look at the risk and, and safety involved in the turning movements. We try to avoid the unprotected left turns. And then we also look at. The efficiency of scheduling the bus for the passengers' needs and for, um, the work assignments. For the people that are actually going to drive the buses. So there is a lot that goes into it. And like I said, we started this about six years ago. We first introduced the concept. When we did the Salinas Valley Express Transit Corridor Study. Um, and more recently, we did the, you know, a deeper dive into Solidad, uh, about three. Um, and more recently, we did the, you know, a deeper dive into Solidad, uh, about three, three or four years ago. And we looked at a walk shed that's about a half a mile. So we're aiming to serve most of Solidad residents within a half a mile of a bus stop. And there is one planned for Palm and Second, and that gets pretty close to the areas that, uh, were mentioned Seventh, Eighth, Ninth Streets. So it's about a half a mile walk. As city leaders, I think you know that there's more demand, uh, for services than there are resources. And as a special district, we're in that same position. So do the best we can with the resources that were given. And then one more thing I wanted to mention is that, um, while the general public on call is going away, when the circulator goes in, the rides paratransit service is not going away. So that is still gonna be available for seniors and, uh, people with disabilities who need that door-to-door service. The, the rides program is gonna continue. Um, but other than that, I just want to say that I'm so happy that we've made it to this point. We're at final design, and we are ready to issue a construction contract and get this going, and we're looking forward to growing with the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Good comments.
Yeah, thank you, Michelle, and thank you, council, for the comments as well. And thank you. I, I'm excited to make sure that this, you know, becomes a reality for our community. And thank you, Michelle, for pointing out too, for our residents, just so you know. I, I, you know, I said MST on call would be going away, but we still have the rides and the paratransit, which is part of the Measure Q funds, I believe. Um, that is, um, the funding that was approved by all modern county residents to ensure that our seniors had, and especially our persons with disabilities as well had access to transportation at their doorstep to go to wherever they need to go. Thank you.
May I answer the chair next to your question?
Um, um, yeah, so this is the final question, so we can.
Yeah, definitely, just for, for our community to know. Um, so you are the, uh, the chair for the MST, um, and I guess my question is just, uh, uh, so is, is this set in stone? If you could tell me, like, it totally wasn't yet, maybe? And if it's not, then can you advocate for our senior residents and also those, uh, residents living in the older parts of town where we need this transportation?
So, yeah, let me be clear, because I said it before, but I'm gonna say it again.
Thank you.
That I can advocate for our residents and our senior residents and transportation services to, to Solidad. And so as your representative on that MS, um, the MST board, for me, this circulator and looking at inclusion and equity has been what I've been fighting for, along with our South County, um, representatives that sit on the board, Gonzalez, Greenfield, King City, and, and myself. So I just want to make that clear that I am an advocate for seniors. I am an advocate for continued services to be able to provide those on-call services as part of the rides and the paratransit and the MST on-call. So I just want to make sure that there's no question about how I'm representing my community um, and my residents, uh, and, and the board as in regards to the addition, um, of, of stops. It's like I said, it's ninety seven, ninety percent complete. Um, after it's installed, if, you know, the council wants to come back and take a look at it and look at the resources to, to be able to look at different, um, a different situation, then that's gonna be, that's gonna be on the council, because the funding that's been provided is not coming from the council, not coming from the city. It's coming from the funding through MST that we have for this particular program to come into effect. So I would just ask, you know, to be able to, um, look before we start, before we start saying that we're not servicing that population, is look at implementation of the circulator route and then look at what are the gaps in services? Are we not? And then if we determine with data and facts that we're not serving that population, then we come back as a council to decide what we need to do, um, because after that MST won't have the funding. It'll be on the city to be able to look at what funding is available to do that. So I just want to make sure that people understand that nobody's being excluded here, our senior population and our, and our older part of Solidad are, is not being excluded, because there is, there is that stop. Um, and it'll be assessed, then we'll come back and we'll determine if there's a need to do that, then we, as a council, will come back and make that determination. Okay, so with that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Leon, for being here. Michelle, thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you, Michelle.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I, I look forward to this getting completed and getting the service that we need here in Solidad.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, then let's move on to our next item. And our next item is our consent calendar. So, uh, we have five items on our consent calendar, C one through C five. So at this time, if there's any public, any, uh, anyone, any member from the public that wants to pull items, C one through C five, let me know. Is there any, uh, any members of the public that want to pull any items from the consent calendar? Okay, C nine, then I'll bring it back to the council. Is there any members of the council that want to pull any items from our consent calendar for further question or discussion?
C one and C five for a question.
Okay.
C one, C five.
Okay, so we have C one, C four, and C five. Okay, so, um, I'll make a motion. Can we get a motion then to approve item C two and C three?
Actually, I'm sorry, C, C two, C two and C five.
Okay, C two. And C five? Okay, not C four? I have.
No.
C four, okay, you don't have C one.
No.
Okay, so then I make a motion to, if there's a motion to approve item C one and C three?
So.
Okay, so second, so all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, so motion carries to approve item C one and C three, and then I will, uh, take it, uh, C two, C two. So council member Carrera?
Uh, yes, you, my only question is, at the beginning of the, of the reports, and, and I saw this last meeting as well, um, I saw several, uh, voiding checks. So we have twenty-four. Are we paying for this void check? Or why are we voiding so many checks? This is just the first line. Has twenty-four voided? Or is there, or what is, what is that? Because it says voiding, void check, and then at the bottom says twenty-four voided, debit? Is zero, you're paying, or what does that mean? You're confused about that.
Um, so it's always helpful, I'm the Morris, to, uh, if, if you, if you let me know ahead of time, um, I can make sure that Mike Howard is here, um.
Okay.
That one, that's a little detail that I probably don't know, but I, the, the checks sometimes are avoided because um, we're setting up, you know, electronic payment things, like sometimes when you void a check, um, it, it's related to that, but I, I would have to ask Mike Howard, uh, and I can get back to you on that. I can, and if you want, I can bring that answer back to the next one.
Just a little bit of information, we'll do some, like, because I was thinking, is there somebody there making a mistake and then voiding then?
No, no.
No, but that's, yeah, that's fine, yeah. And then on, um, uh, C five, I was wondering if, um, if, if, uh, there, there were some, um, work done in well, uh, well, seven, ten, and eleven? Is that in progress still or are we close to to completing? Uh, it's page, um, two, two of that.
I will refer to Public Works, turn, go fast.
So the work is, uh, going on wells, six, seven, ten, eleven, nine, all five wells. We have a work ongoing. In the winter season, that's when our demand is about a third of what it is on the peak, the maximum day in the summer. So we're doing various work on all the wells to get them ready for our crunch during the summer.
Hmm, yeah, because I got somebody asking me a question that I couldn't, um, I couldn't even comprehend this. Uh, the person said, oh, they said that we don't have pressure in the home because they, the well is not working.
Uh, uh, we're fine. We have pressure. Any one of our wells can provide water to anywhere in the city. But we highly recommend, if there's a question, to do that to Moises Seremende, our water manager.
Okay.
He's great at answering questions.
So next time I, I'll just.
Perfect.
Right to you, best.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, thank you for that. So, uh, Mayor President, uh, you had a question, item C dash four?
Um, yes, I have a, um, I got a, a question and comment. Um, first of all, is there anybody here who's representing the Solida Historical Society?
I am.
You are? Okay, um, I, is there anyone who could come to the podium or?
So what, what's your question? So your comment or?
Yeah, so, so my, um, my question first was if there was anyone representing, um, the Solida Historical Society for the Farmers Market, and then my, my comment was, uh, gonna be that I remember last year when this, uh, came up to council, we were all surprised when we got our vendor list, that there was, and there was only one Solida vendor. Um, because, uh, you know, we have so many, uh, skilled, um, Solida locals that, that create things or, or, or they sell things. And I was just gonna say, when I saw the list, um, that we received today, I was pleasantly surprised um, to see that you guys have more South County, um, businesses at the Farmers Market this year. So I was just gonna thank you. I don't know if you guys have done the extra outreach to our Solida, both that, that have micro businesses or, or or, you know, are selling stuff. I just wanted to, um, thank you guys. If there were any efforts, um, made, I could definitely see that on the vendor list. So just wanted to thank you for giving an opportunity to our South County business, businesses.
That, that is our account to, to, uh, since it is a Solida, uh, Farmers Market, uh, there's misunderstanding by some people. This is the only certified, uh, organic market south of Salinas.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and that way, not everybody, not all farmers can, can use the facility, if you will.
Yeah.
Uh, and just like, uh, since we are limited on space, uh, if I recall correctly, we only have fourteen vendor spots, uh, so none of them can be duplicates. So we, we can't, we have a, a chicken barbecue, and so that takes care of the chicken barbecue. We can't have a chicken barbecue on the other end of the street. Uh, and this, and the, uh, the property that we've, uh, been using for the last ten years is only half of the block. Because if you have residential houses on the other end of that block, and Gus's is across the street, and, uh, there is a parking lot that comes out, uh, from front street businesses that have to be maintained open.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's, um, first responders or, uh, I don't know the whole, it's on half. But, uh, uh, we, uh, we also have a larger, uh, list of clients that are interested. Uh, but, uh, many of them, uh, uh, we have a, a drop list because, uh, uh, part of the, uh, uh, application is that they have to have their own insurance and that, uh, uh, also that they can't duplicate products or services.
Not again.
Uh, uh, we've had, uh, the baker has had some, uh, health issues. So we lost the baker, but we brought in the, the lavender. I don't know the full name, but it's from the lavender farm that's out by Roy Seckel.
Yeah.
And he was a hit at the end of last year. And Flora, of course, is also a member, but she's the organic farmer, and that's how we have that special license.
Yeah.
And.
Great. And just before you leave, I just, you know, wanted to also, um, thank you guys, because you really have provided a platform for our city. I know we've, um, had our, our staff out there whenever we have certain initiatives or surveys or, or events that we're trying to promote. We've also had our police department there doing community, you know, community policing or community outreach. We have our explorers there. So just, you know, you guys are doing a great job. I just wanted to thank you.
I'm glad that you recognize that. I appreciate that.
Yes, I'm looking forward to going to the Farmers Market.
I'm just hoping that the housing unit that is going in next to us does not take away all of our parking and, uh, cause mutual problems.
Yeah.
So, uh, but, uh, you know, we're praying for, we're really hoping that we can get going, because this is, you, you guys have had a paperwork since January something. And we need to submit this to the county still. County Health has to come and so, and we want it open April eleventh. And we don't have, want to have to notify all our vendors that, no, we're not ready yet. We can't do this because that, that, ah. So, uh, we're grateful if we can get this passed.
Well, I asked that reaching out. So thank you, thank you for that. Yeah, thank you for that. I know holiday for any inconvenience. I know that there's been, you know, some of the council meetings that we had to cancel and whatnot. So, uh, thank you for your patience and obviously, the Farmers Market is something that is, um, a tradition in Solidad, and so we look forward to it and and the future expansion of it as well. So thank you for everything you do. I know, I know you guys are, you know, volunteer and you guys do a lot of great work, and so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, council. So with that, if I can get a motion to approve items, C dash, uh, two, four, four and five?
Four and five.
So.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, awesome motion carried unanimously. So we'll move on. Thank, thank you so much for those that enjoyed.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you for staying late. So we will now move on to our business items, and for today, we do have four business items. Um, so we will move on to business item number one, Resolution sixty fifty-nine, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Solida, approving a consulting services agreement with MNS Engineers for the Design and Construction Management for the West Street Road Diet and Complete Project in Anamata, not to exceed eight hundred and forty-six thousand dollars seventy-five. And authorizing the city manager to execute said consulting services agreement on behalf of the city of Solida. It's all true, this over to Alex.
Sorry for the long title, but. Good evening, uh, mayor, council members. Um, I'm Alvaro Mosso, this is the Solida, I'm the assistant engineer here. Uh, joining me, uh, for questions at the end of this presentation is Michael Piff with MNS. So as the mayor mentioned, uh, what I have before you is, uh, the approval or requesting approval of the consulting services agreement with MNS Engineer for the Design and Construction Management for this, uh, West Street Road Diet and Complete Streets project. As you may recall from previous council meetings, we actually had Leon and Deb come up here and present a lot of the stuff that Public Works is working on in the background regarding just safety improvements on a citywide level and looking and seeking for, uh, different grant opportunities. So the City of Solida actually formally adopted local road safety plan back in December of twenty twenty-two, uh, in which, you know, it provided us with the, it was a planning document that provided us with the a list of improvements based on holistic analysis of vehicle pedestrian and bicycle crash data. Uh, in July of twenty twenty-three, the city prepared an application for the West Street Road Diet and Complete Streets that was identified in the local road safety plan uh, for the Regional Surface Transportation Program, competitive grant from Tamsi. And we got the very, very fortunate news, good news, um, on August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, that we received Tamsi funding in the amount of two point seven five eight million for this, uh, Solida, uh, West Street Road Diet and Complete Streets project. And the last time the City of Solida had received any RSTP funding was actually for the twenty eighteen, uh, Metro Traffic Calming, where it aimed to improve, uh, traffic safety and kind of alleviate some of the congestion observed in the morning and afternoon in the school areas. So the purpose of this West Street Road Diet and Complete Streets project, and feel free to look at the screen up there for a little brief overview, is essentially to implement a road diet where it reduces the number of travel lanes from four to two, um, allowing for a additional space for the, uh, inclusion of local bike lanes, creating a traffic calming effect. With that being said, it also includes a two-way left turn lane, South North Street, a medium retreat planings, junior bike lane buffers, pedestrian crossing, mark crosswalks. And my favorite part, um, is, you know, improving the pavement condition currently at West Street. As you guys have seen out there, it's pretty beat up. And with this really heavy rain event that struck us today, you know, it, it only, you know, makes it worse. Uh, but with this grant funding, we'll have funds to do a full reconstruction project, uh, providing the city with a better product and hopefully, uh, major collector that has a life, uh, a longer lifespan. So with that said, um, we sought out, um, a proposal from MNS, because we believe there is a fully qualified team of professionals to take on this task. And, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Alex. I really appreciate the presentation, and also thank you so much um, to Public Works for really, um, ensuring that these dollars that are made available really come to Solidad. So I just want to thank all the team for ensuring that these dollars come here and that. ensuring that these dollars come here and that we have the ability to improve our, our roadways. I know that's important to our community. Um, let me take it out to the public to see if there's any comments on this item and then I'll bring it back to council for comments, uh, questions and then final comments. Um, so any member of our public here that's joining us here in our chambers, uh, has any questions or comments in regards to item B dash one? Okay, so I will take it out to Zoom and any members of our public that are joining us via Zoom have questions on B dash one. Okay, seeing none, then I'll bring her back to the council for any, um, comments or questions or, um, a motion to approve item B dash one, resolution number sixty fifty-six. I'm just gonna leave it open on these. If anybody has any comments, please feel free to go ahead and do so.
Um, I have, I have no comments. Just wanna thank you guys for all your work and for the thorough report and I'm ready to make a resolution, um, to approve, um, or to make a motion to approve resolution number six zero five six.
Uh, I have a couple of questions before we do that. Let me see, let me see. So, let me see, what is the word that I'm looking for? Calming, you say calming what?
Uh, calming effect?
Calming effect. Can you explain to me that? How is that gonna work? Cause this is, and, and it's my perspective. I'm not saying that you guys did a bad job. It's just my perspective. I, I, I drive through that street every single day at least three times. And when I picture in the future, I picture all the people from Miramonte is coming through either some, some, some some Vicente or through West. Cause that's probably the only two streets that are gonna be able to do. How that calming effect in that portion of the street is gonna help us move along the, the traffic that we already have with the high school and all the schools? Cause when I, when I was reading it and I saw that turn to the left. I'm sorry for that, but I don't see, I don't see a reason why having a turn left when there is, when all the entrances to those, to those, um, uh, buildings are on that side of the street that could easily come from this one for, from Gabi Land or to the other side. So, uh, I, I really is not, is not. I'm not questioning, but I don't understand the effect or the reason for, uh, moving from four lines to only two lines when we're gonna have a lot of traffic in that area. Plus, uh, bus stops.
Of course. Um, and just to answer that first part, uh, for handing it out to Michael up here. So we did take into consideration, you know, the expansion of Miramonte and thus the vehicular traffic that will probably be generated with that expansion. And we did get a, a tech memo and I believe it was from.
Phil Seer?
Um, it was from the gentleman and the folks over handling the traffic circulation with Miramonte. So Keith Higgins saying. So we do have that tech memo, uh, available to us that we can share, but, um, as part of this project, we wanted to make sure that, you know, we didn't do something and then have to essentially undo it, right? So we went ahead and, and, and talked to Keith Higgins and we did get confirmation that this project wouldn't inhibit or you know, add to congestion or anything of that sort. But, uh, to answer your question regarding what the traffic or calming effect is, uh, Michael, if you can take it from here?
Uh, sure. Uh, thank you for having me. Um, as far as traffic calming, I think in, in general, uh, when we introduce these vertical bollards within that, the separated, uh, area between the bike way and the vehicle lanes, it narrows the roadway. So people tend to drive slower. The other aspect of it is that, you know, again, if we're reducing the lanes from four to two, you know, traffic might be heavier, but it'll also be slower. So I think part of the concern is that, uh, you know, the, it's twofold. We wanna have this area have slower traffic. So it's safer for the bike riders as where they're trying to get to the schools. And, and in the same sense, you know, I mean that it also, um, in some respects, kind of diverts the traffic to the other, other, uh, streets as far as, you know, when, when we do reduce it from two to four. Same type of effect to, to have less traffic, less conflicts for the, um, this bike way that we're developing.
Okay, but in, in that, in that area, half of the street, half of the piece that, that we're talking about is have no entrance to the left or to the right. So the only, the only entrance that we have is, uh, what's it new or something? And then north. So those are the two, uh, the two streets that we have. And they don't, they, they go to, um, to places that I don't see that much traffic. And so what I'm trying to understand is that, uh, in my regular day driving right there, I don't see that many students going in bikes to schools because one main street entrance is on the other side of the, the street. Uh, the entrance that we are taking in this side or north goes directly into the, to the soccer field. And, uh, and there's no entrance there for school. So they have to go around. So in any case, people from this side that goes to, uh, Main Street will have to take, um, Market. Yeah, Market Street, not North. Cause North is gonna take him, again, they have to go around. So the, the closest way to get to Main Street is through, uh, through Market. So I don't know, I, I, I'm, I'm sorry, but I don't see the benefit. I don't see the benefit in traffic and I don't see the benefit in helping our students to go to school. State it.
Through the chair, uh, through the chair, maybe, maybe one thing, um, to give a little perspective is a lot has changed in, in traffic engineering and I, I feel I spent many years under the tutelage of Andrew Easterling, who's now as the City Engineer for Monterey, but, um, really it's about safety. It, it used to be traffic engineering was a lot about moving the vehicles and the cars and moving them fast. But what has happened over time is it's resulted in a lot of deaths and safety issues. So now, um, traffic, you know, transportation planning is really moving into complete streets and to allowing for multimodal forms of transportation, hopefully to reduce trips, but also to make these lots safer, uh, to get people driving slower. So it really has shifted from, you know, the vehicle to kind of this mul- multimodal and to making it safe. Cause obviously if you put a car and a pedestrian in conflict with each other, the pedestrian's gonna lose every time. So this is a way to give, you know, chances for people who are on bikes and who are on, who are pedestrians. And so that, that's that's why now you'll see a lot of this, what they call road diets or, um, you know, complete streets because traffic engineering has evolved and maybe someday we'll see, you know, and, you know, less need for cars because we'll have other, you know, sources of transportation or, and it's great that we have bus routes to see more people using buses too, so.
Sure. Just to clarify, so we're talking about computerized, uh, design that in, that involves what if, what if a person is riding a bike in this line and there's two lines versus one line? Is that, is that what you're talking about? It's not, it's, 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 it's the, uh, computerized program that is designing this.
Well, n- n- no, I think M N S, um, the, the, this is for them to design it.
If, if I, if I may direct your attention to the screen over here, these are conceptual drawings, right, of what it might look like. This is what M N S would be essentially tackling on, comparing exactly how it is, what makes the most sense, right? That's part of the, 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 their, I guess, task when approving this consulting services agreement. Is looking into these considerations and making sure that the things we're proposing makes sense. Yeah. So you, if, if it doesn't work, of course, we wouldn't wanna do something that inadvertently causes consequences, right? Um, at the end of the goal, at the end of the day, the goal is to improve safety and promote different means of transportation.
It just says that it's not gonna change.
What's that?
You say earlier that it's not gonna change. It's gonna stay like that. Did you say that? I, I, I recall that you said this is.
So just to go back to, okay, so just to address council member, just to make sure that we're wrapping it up and moving forward. So the concern, so, so your concern is in regards to the
Effective.
The, the effectiveness of that. So, you know, obviously I think for me, I, I also wanna make sure we don't, we you know, don't underscore, underscore the fact that I think what we're trying to do also with our city, and correct me if I'm wrong, Alex, but you know, as we're looking at the circulation of our traffic and how the traffic flows right now, but also what we don't have, and I know one of the things that we don't have throughout the city is, is bike lanes to be able to ensure that people, and not just the students, but I think that's for all of our residents, to have that accessibility to get on a bike and to have a path, a road, a bike lane throughout the city that could connect you from one side of the city to the next. I used to drive my, I used to ride my bike before and, and I don't anymore, but I know when I was riding my bike, it was really difficult because our city isn't designed for the path, you know, some areas, the new ones have the pa- the bike path, and then there's others that don't and that especially on that West Street corridor, because it's such a long corridor. Um, it's heavily, you know, with a heavily traffic and it's not safe. Not to pedestrians or, I mean, not to bike work, to the bike lane. So I think it's a kind of twofold. Also looking at what makes sense in terms of traffic flow for safety purposes. And then also how do we make sure that we have a connected city? Um, and that, you know, we're looking at, we're getting money to be able to provide more safety, that we're also adding more opportunities for people to get out of their car and utilize the, the bike paths and create new ones that we don't have. Um, so, uh, you know, I think it's, it's important for us to be able to look at that, the, the, you know, I, I'm de- definitely not an engineer, but, uh, you know, um, as we're looking at this, I hope that this is something, as you mentioned, as well, that if we look at the, um, the memo, the tech memo, and I would like to, if you can, we send that to us as, as the council. Important because I know that everybody's worried about the, um, Miramonte, and I know that was one of my concerns, you know, about the comprehensive, um, infrastructure plan, right? Because we don't want all the traffic as we develop. We don't want West Street to be the main street where everything's gonna come out. So I think we also have to look at the infrastructure plan that also includes the winding of San Vicente. They're looking at San Vicente and also looking at the connectivity off of Orchard, right? Because you're also gonna have Orchard connected and West Street. So it's not, all the traffic flow isn't just gonna come through West Street, but that we're creating. And so I think that's gonna be really important for the council as we're looking at those future comprehensive plans, whether we're here or not, you know, that, that's gonna be really critical because all of the traffic flow from on top is coming down this way. And making sure that there's, there's safety, first of all, for our residents, but also that we don't create more congestion that we don't need to. Um, and also that we have, as we're building, that we have opportunities to be a connected city where we have the pathways and the bike, the bike lanes. So, so, uh, so if there's additional, um, concerns on it, I think I, you know, I, I wanna make sure that we move on, we move forward. I, I wanna make sure that before the council makes, uh, uh, an approval that we have, you know, that, that we feel comfortable about, of course, about it. So. Okay, so final comments, council. Final, final comments, so we can go ahead and move forward?
I just, I just don't see the point. We already have bike, bike line, lines right there. So I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I don't see, I don't see, uh, how, uh, working in half of the street. Cause it's, it's not even a mile, right? No, not even a mile. How that less than a mile is gonna impact positively into what our residents are doing right now or in the future? Cause, um, I don't, I, I, I don't see that, that they, they and maybe I'm wrong. I've been wrong before, but I, but I don't see the point. I don't see the, the effectiveness of it. I don't see, um, why changing four lines just because we're gonna create a line and maybe with, with, uh, three quarters of a, of a mile, hoping that everybody's gonna drop their car and take a bite. So the, I don't, I, I, I don't don't think I, I, I don't, I don't see that usually.
Okay, so council member, in order for us to move forward, um, we'll go ahead and then um, make a motion and, and we'll see what happens in the outcome of the motion and, uh, we'll go from there. So.
Mayor, through the chair, I have final comments as well?
Uh, yes, so I, okay, it, it's just, yeah, let's move on. I know when I ask for comments, please make your comments so that we, we don't come back. And, and spend more time on this. Um, I thought you didn't have any comments on it.
I did, but then you asked for final comments. So.
I asked him for final comments because I know he was going on with his comments about what he was not, um, happy with in terms of that. So I just wanted to make sure we're concluding that we can move forward with the other items that we have. And if this is something that the council's not ready to approve, then we, we can take it out for a vote. And if it fails, then, then it, it doesn't, it doesn't move forward.
Yeah, and through the chair, I just wanna be clear, we're, we have already been awarded two point seven five eight million dollars. Um, some of your concerns, um, we can address. I mean, basically this contract is higher M N S to get into kind of some of the details to make sure that it works and we could, you know, um, reach out to you and, and Alex could reach out to you to get some of your concerns so that we can consider it in the design phase. But I would hate for council to not pass this measure and then lose out on, um, significant grant funding that not only results in the, uh, Complete Streets Project, but as Alex mentioned, we get to repave the entire street, which is in rough shape. And we know from our pavement management, um, meetings that we need, we need to do a lot of, uh, street repairs. So it's a great opportunity and I just don't want us to lose this opportunity for nearly three million dollars in grant funds. Yeah.
So thank you, Mayor, with that and council with, with that information. And it's important that we do have already secured funding. The, and they're gonna be designing it. Council member, you can reach, uh, they'll reach out to you for additional comments on that. So I would like to move forward with approving resolution number sixty.
Through the chair.
So I'm speaking, so please make sure that, I, I don't wanna be interrupted. So I have, I have the chair and I wanna make sure that we're, we're moving along. The comments were made already. We've had full discussion on this. I wanna make sure we move on because we do have other comments. So with that, I, I was making a motion. So I make a motion to approve resolution number sixty fifty-six. So I'd like a second, please.
I believe I have made a motion earlier at the beginning of the discussion.
You did. Yes, correct. Okay, so there's a motion. I second the motion. There's a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to our next item with item B dash two. Consideration of sponsoring the Fourth of July Firework Show and subsequent amendment in the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
So, um, I'm going to be, uh, making a quick, uh, quick presentation. Um, in, in several years, uh, the city, um, has sponsored the fireworks show. Last year, uh, the city did, um, actually directly, which is what I kind of discovered, um, when we received, um, contact from the pyrotechnics company directly, um, contracted with uh, the vendor, uh, for the fireworks show. So we, we had the contract and we actually paid, um, directly, uh, for it. Um, in, in the report, it does indicate, uh, that the pyrotechnics company indicated that the cost of uh, the fireworks show, uh, was going to increase, but actually Darlene, I do wanna make a correction. Um, when they reached back out to Darlene today, um, they indicated that the show would be twenty thousand. So I do wanna put that correction in my report. So, um, the fireworks, the Fourth of July, um, committee, um, connected us again with the pyrotechnics, um, company vendor to, um, potentially sponsor the fireworks show. Company vendor to, um, potentially sponsor the fireworks show, it's, um. You know, a significant, uh, amount of money, um, which I think is only fitting that the council. Um, takes a look at it and considers whether or not this is a financial commitment we continue to want to make. Um, it's my understanding, but I wasn't here, that last year, there was a. A discussion about, you know, again, having not necessarily sponsoring it in twenty twenty four, but, um, having. Sponsoring it in twenty twenty three to give time to the Fourth of July. Committee to fundraise, um, for twenty twenty four, um, the committee has, um. Reach out to us again to, uh, look at the city, um, contributing to the, to the fireworks, uh, show for twenty twenty four. Um, and the vendor has come to us with a contract, so I didn't wanna. I didn't wanna enter into it without, um, getting direction from, um, from council, um. There is a significant, couple of things just to note, there is a significant cost premium. To have the Fourth of July, um, the fireworks show on the Fourth of July. Um, other jurisdictions have, um, held it on alter- alternative dates to reduce costs. So that's one, one thing to note, um. Greenfield ha- actually, um, has marketed, um, paying for their tax measure, um. They, they use their annual, um, sponsorship of the fireworks show as kind of a, you know, tied to. Um, passing their sales tax measure in recent years, just as an example of a, a different city and what they do. Um, so, the, the fire, Fourth of July, uh, committee, the, the reason why they've asked, um, for. Sponsorship is that they have a lot of activities and they do a whole day event, they have, you know, a lot of expenses related to it. Um, but again, you have to, the reason why I'm coming here is to get direction to see if this is what. Is of interest, um, funding, funding the fireworks show, because it has not been budgeted. Um, and would require an amendment, uh, which we could do with the mid-year, um, budget that's. Set to come to you in, uh, March twentieth. The only other thing I just wanted to note is that, um. We, this year, I'm gonna make sure our insurer, which is Ambesia. Has, uh, stressed to us last year that if the city is taking on any fireworks show, that we. Um, carry an additional insurance rider, which I think, um, this year I'll make sure we do do, I'm not sure. Entirely sure what that cost is, um, and then. It is a challenge for our fire department and police department to, they have to staff the fireworks show. And then there's a lot of illegal fireworks going on simultaneously, and we only have so many bodies. So I think the expectation of what they can do in that time period, um, we just have to be realistic about what they can do. Um, during the fireworks show, because it can't be at two places at one time. Um, so in any event, the, the proposal would be for twenty thousand dollars, um. There is an additional insurance, um, insurance rider that we would have to. Um, play, put on, on this event, and then the only other thing is, just mentioning that. Um, I haven't been able to calculate exactly what it is, but we obviously, when we do have these events, we. The city provides a lot of in, in-kind, um, services for, uh. Police and fire that are often not calculated in the cost of kind of these events, so I just wanted to know, um. That is also a consideration when you're looking at the, the financial situation with this. Um, so with that, I, um, I just wanted to present and get your, your feedback and direction on. How you wanna move forward, um, with a potential fireworks show for twenty twenty four.
May I make a statement?
Yeah, hold on, Pauline, I'm gonna open it up, so let me just, so for clarification purpose in terms of how. Um, we're gonna proceed with the, uh, business items, um, and the public comments, so. Staff is gonna give the report, and then I'll do this, the same for the rest of them, is I'm gonna go out to public comment. And then bring it back to the council, and for the council, I wanna make sure that we're clear on this, so we'll have any questions in the first round. Questions and concerns, and then the second round will be any final comments, and so that way we're clear and we're not going back and forth in terms of. We have more questions and more concerns, so for the sake of making sure that we, we, um. Address all of the, your questions or concerns, is make sure that that happens in the first round, and then the last one will just be for final. Comments, if you have any final comments to make, um, so with that, I'm gonna take it out to the public for public comments. Um, and so we have Pauline ready for a public comment.
Last year, at the city council meeting, I think it was agreed that. The city would pay for one half of the cost and the committee would pay for the other half, that's. What I had understood, so I don't know, you'll look up your records. Um, if the city was gonna pay for one half and we would pay one half, uh, the twenty thousand. Uh, the pyrotechnic company being, we've been doing business with them for so many years. Uh, the show really is twenty five thousand, but that, they said they would still leave it maybe twenty thousand or one thousand increase. It could be twenty thousand or twenty one thousand, they would work with us. But we had understood, the committee understood that we are responsible for one half of the show.
So.
I don't know if, if all of you, you were on, uh.
Yeah, I was, I was here, and I'm trying to recall some of my.
Yeah, we have to look up in your records.
I have to go back, but I, I know it'd be on our, our comments, it would be on our public, uh, would be on our meeting minutes, so. That means, uh, just to clarify what you're saying is that. You would pay ten thousand and the city would contribute ten thousand, so not the twenty thousand, last year we did twenty.
So, yes, let, we, we, not only did we pay the money, we entered directly into the contract with the pyrotechnic. Um, for actually, I think a couple of years, but definitely last year, that was a case that the city both paid. An upfront deposit and then paid the cost and signed the contract.
So Pauline, we'll check into that, and we check into the minutes of the, the recommendations from last time. Whether we agreed to, to do that, but even if we, if, I mean, the, we were here now, right? So I think there has to be an approval from the board to be able to move forward now, in this budget cycle.
Right, yeah, I don't, I don't recall the council making a commitment for two thousand twenty four, I think there was a discussion. That if they were going to pay the full amount in two thousand twenty three, that in the following year, there would be a split. And I guess the question I have for you, Pauline, is, um, do you both have your ten thousand dollars at this point?
No, we're fundraising, we, maybe we have about half, but, but we're fundraising. You know, it's gonna be a challenge for us, because there's so few of us on the committee.
Okay, so.
For those information, I, it maybe I mean, didn't hear quite right, but didn't we just offer twenty thousand? No?
So, yeah, so in the report, what my recommendation is, is that. This city, if we move forward, because I'm uncomfortable, um. We, we've seemed to have taken on liability with signing a contract, which is what I'm being asked to do. My recommendation is if the council wants to support, uh, the fireworks show, that it's. Sponsored by the city, that we have oversight over the, the, the fireworks, so we can kind of. Um, have a closer control with especially the fire department. Um, and make sure that we have additional liability coverage under the Ambesia, and then. Potentially be able to get sponsorships, uh, you know, to, to help, and if, if the Fourth of July. Committee wants to help sponsor, uh, the fireworks show, I think that would be helpful, um, for sure, to defray the city cost, but. To me, the city is, um, taking on a lot of responsibility, and so we need to make sure that the systems are in place if. Council desires to continue to do the fireworks job.
Okay, so we've been doing fireworks for quite a few years, and we pay for all of it, you know.
Yeah, so Pauline, I'll go back to, uh, I know the public comments portion, I wanna honor that, and I wanted to clarify what you were, what you were asking, but can. So, to make a public comments, I'm gonna allow you to just finish the public comments, and then we'll ask for more public comments. We'll take it out to the council, and, I mean, take it out to, uh, Zoom, and then we'll come back, the, the council has questions, we'll ask those questions. On the first round of, of comments and questions. So, any additional comments?
No, you know, it's not only the fireworks that is expensive, we have a couple of bands that we. A Spanish band and an English band, you know, and we have other types of entertainment, so it's not just the fireworks expense, you know. And we do this for the public, I mean, you know, we don't get anything out of it personally. We're doing it on behalf of the city, you know, to, uh, Greenfield has been doing it for years, and the city. You know, has some kind of measure, you know, that pays for it, because Al's doesn't have any, and King City, uh. Well, King City, they've got a lot of money down there, so they have no problems with their entertainment, you know. So.
Thank you, Pauline.
That's my statement.
Thank you for your comments.
And then I don't even live here in the city of Sol, yeah, you know, I'm part of the country.
Thank you, we appreciate all the work, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, so we'll open it up for anybody else, if there's any other public comments on this item, from those that are joining us here. Okay, seeing none, then I will take it out to those that are joining us via Zoom. Um, and I do see one hand raised, so let me just get to here, um, okay, Eva, if you can unmute yourself. And we have the three-minute public comment, uh, timeframe.
Hi, good evening, council, sorry, Pauline, I'm not there with you, but I'm driving inside, but anyway. Um, I just wanted to just, uh, make a statement and, and a comment in regards to what Megan was. Was sharing in regards to the amount, um, as discussed from last year, and then, um, um. Lawyer had mentioned that, you know, for this year, we were gonna meet half of the amount. And not have the city pay for the whole amount, because we wanna do our part, and then I believe that was the agreement, that. We pay half this year and the city would pay half, but, um, you know, we wanna continue to have the city of solid support us. And of course, co-sponsor as well, um, in regards to the fundraising, we continue to fundraise, and yes, I do agree, um, with. With Pauline, because I'm echoing that we, it's a challenge, guys, there's only what, three of us, four of us? You know, and we need, we need more, you know, we wanna give back and we're trying to give back, and yeah, there's a lot of, uh, challenges that we face, because there's only. A, a few of us, you know, and you know who they are, but, you know, we all, we all do it in the kindness of our heart. You know, and so that way we can do this for the community, but anyway. Uh, a- as discussed from last year, I do believe that, uh. It, there was an agreement that we were going to, um, have the city pay half. And not the whole amount, and the committee raised the other half, and of course, there are other expenses in regards to entertainment. You know, jump houses and all that, so. Uh, you know, we're, we're still doing it, and we're gonna continue to push, you know, our fundraising, and we are. Having a, a, another fundraiser on Friday, if you guys can mark your calendars to support it, Friday, April twelfth. And that is a comedy night at Cheesers, so all the funds that we raise are gonna be. Um, that go, it'll go towards the fireworks, you know, not just the show, but everything that we have all day, so. I think I, I don't think I missed anything else, but thank you so much for this time.
Thank you, thank you, Eva, uh, and I do see another hand raised, Mr. Franco Alejo, you can unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Pauline, I don't. I don't know why you guys haven't went nonprofit yet, I remember Carla saying something about going nonprofit, but. I, um, for the rotary, like, are you asking at the rotary, like, us help you to raise the rest? That's, it's a thought, like, how about we talk about it and try to raise the rest? So that you, so we don't keep doing stuff like, oh, that's the city, the fund, that's the city fund. I think maybe go under the, or is it nonprofit? I know the president is like, maybe we should help, I mean, you do a lot of stuff. You do a lot of volunteer work, you, you, you've done this all your life, but why don't you just try and let us, uh, help you at the rotary? A little, like, that way the city doesn't, you know, exhaust all that, that finance, that's, that's a lot of money. That's all.
Thank you for coming, so I want, I don't wanna get into a, a back and forth discussion, so it's public comment right now, and it's just public comment, I don't wanna. Have this out.
If I can't say anything about rotary plug, where are the?
Pauline, so I just wanna be on, be able to honor the public comment period, and, and if there's. That opportunity for a dialogue outside of the public comment period, you know, we encourage that to happen, but. I wanna honor that the public comment period for us right now is making sure there's public comment on this item. Um, and, and that we honor that, and any future discussions can, could be done up. Out, out of the public comment period, so I just wanna make sure we, we finish with that, so, um, any other public comments on that item on Zoom? Okay, seeing none, then I'm gonna close the public comment period, and then I'm gonna bring it back to the council for, um. At this point, the first round is gonna be questions and concerns first, um, so I will, um.
Do I get an excuse?
Yes, okay, I'm getting Pauline, yes, you can sit down. Okay, sorry about that, so we'll move on to, uh, Mayor Proten, uh, questions and concerns first.
Thank you, um, first of all, if I have to say my questions and concerns, I just wanted to thank Pauline and Eva for doing this every year, and. Pauline for being out here at nine thirty nine, um, you're always a, a trooper for your community, and I appreciate that. Um, I think I have two questions, um, the first one is on the insurance, um, in rap on the insurance rider. And I, I think you already touched on it, you said you didn't know the exact amount, Megan, but do we have maybe like the rough estimate of how much that would cost?
Um, I think it's a, it's a few thousand dollars, but I, I have to.
A few thousand?
Yeah.
And that's just for the one show, one day?
Okay. But I, I can, I can, um, get back to council what, what the actual cost is.
Okay, thank you, and then, um, my, um, second question also to staff, um. You know, in, in all transparency, I think we saw today with the solid debt, um, district, um, with, with Francis, when, you know, they. Uh, and not just the district, but a lot of different organizations and nonprofits, and groups that are not even nonprofit. Um, have, have came to the city and have presented or, or done presentations or requested our financial assistance. Um, is there any group that we consistently have helped, um, with funding the event? Um, like something similar, maybe, that we've done in the past?
Well, I think we've con- consistently supported, um, this event, you know, if, if there's, there's some history there. Um, and then I think that the fire and police department have helped quite a bit with the Christmas parade. Um, I think it would be fair to say.
Yeah.
Um, those are, those are the two main events.
Okay, I think, um, I know for me, I make a lot of my decisions based on. Um, our, our staff reports and, and based on council, um, what is it called, um, legal advice? And in, in looking at this report, there was so many. Um, I don't wanna say red flags, but so many concerns, um, that I, 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 you know, uh, I don't think our community get to see, you know. The report that I'm looking at right now, but obviously, there was, um, the challenge to our departments, to our fire. To our, um, uh, police department, you know, having them there, but then at the same time, having them go to, I believe last year, we had a. Home on Walker that caught on fire, and we had a lot of illegal fireworks, um, I went to the show, it was beautiful. Um, the fireworks show, it, it lasted maybe twenty minutes, and I wanna say there was illegal fireworks going. That were higher, that were bigger before and after, like, I don't know where, where these, uh, you know, uh, uh, residents give, give. All that funding for that, um, but of course, it's, you know, none of my business, it's a private, um. Things, but it was just like their shows even caught people's comments were, wow, like, that was bigger or, or lasting longer. Um, so there was that, and then, um, also the insurance, um, thing that was brought up, and then also the fact that it's public funds and. And, um, I think it was brought up somewhere on this report, that we have, um, we have a lot of, um. Uh, I guess things, um, that as a city that we need, we have our roads, I believe. uh, I guess things, um, that as a city that we need, we have our roads, I believe that I saw the roads on here um, that need repair. We have, um, even now with the flooding, we unfortunately we have weather that we didn't expect, right? And, and I believe there was flooding, we had to close the underpass um, over by the Caltrans at the southern end of town. So I, I, you know, I'm glad that we're having this open discussion because I think it is important for us to, you know, um, to discuss and, and also to, you know, for our community to, to know what we're doing with these public funds.
Okay, thank you for your comments. I'll move it over to Councilwoman Gavida.
So I have a couple of comments and questions.
Yeah, questions, then concerns first, and then comments.
Well, concerns, let's call it concerns. So, the first question is, um, I don't remember exactly, uh, how much money we have from the small grants or if we have, uh, provided that whole fund for it. But I was wondering if there is something that we can use from those small grants to help them as well. Uh, because there is, uh, from my perspective, they need all the criteria for, for a small grant. That, uh, when it comes to funding. Um, and, I'm, I'm sorry, but I just, I thought that I heard you saying we provide twenty thousand, but it was just probably my mind. Uh, the other, the other thing that, uh, you mentioned, um, Megan, that other places do, uh, a different date, not on, on the Fourth of July. Um, living here for almost forty years, I, I have seen Fourth of July illegal fireworks every year. So whether we celebrate our Fourth of July or not, that is going to happen. So we're going to put our staff through two days, maybe three days of that if we do it separately. Um, I don't know, I don't, from, from my perspective, I, I don't think it's a good idea to do it on a different date. If we support it, I think that we should because I cannot think of any other event that the city provides funds in which the whole community is involved. Um, I will support it, um, if it's half, then half. But I also would like for them to apply for a small grant and see if we have any, any, any more funding there. So that you guys can get a little bit more help. Okay.
Um, to the chair, um, just to let, um, Councilman. Um, we, we did close the, um, mini-grants. Um, we may open up another round, but to be fair to the people that had applied by the deadline, we did. Um, we did, uh, recently close that deadline. Um, the, the one thing that I wanted to clarify is that the city and, you know, maybe this doesn't have to happen, but the city is entered directly into the contract with the pyrotechnics company. Um, we signed, um, and directly gave them. So it's more than just funding the fireworks show, it's the fact that we're assuming liability. And so for those reasons, I think we need to be a little bit more, um, involved. It's, it's a different thing than other events. We're talking about fireworks, which are a very dangerous thing that do um, involve, um, the fire department. I know, um, uh, Chief Lookemback is here, um, and so is, uh, Chief Lawson, but it, it's a little different, um, animal. And I know, um, for example, in Greenfield, they, they sponsor the fireworks show. Um, so that's, that's kind of, um, what I was suggesting if council does want to make that investment. And then afterwards, we can try to fundraise and if groups want to contribute to the fireworks show, you know, then it's sponsored by the Rotary, it's sponsored by the Fourth of July, and then you can sponsor by Frogger Farms. Um, but at least we kind of control this potentially dangerous thing. Uh, and we have the appropriate insurance coverage. That, that's my big concern.
Okay.
Um, thank you for that, Megan. Um, I, I have some comments. I mean, I have some concerns too. And then, um, I would like to hear if possible also from the chief and from our fire in, in regards to just some of the activities. So we have better understand and maybe I'll defer my comments until I have a little bit more information, if you don't mind, just in terms of some of the issues, cons- concerns with, uh, the fireworks shows and what can we do moving forward?
Yeah, so, um, Megan brought up a really good point. One of the strains for the fire department and PD, having this event on July fourth creates an extremely strong strain on the fire department. If you remember last year, there was the fatality in Gonzalez. The way Greenfield, Gonzalez, King City, South Monterey County work, we all have mutual aid agreements. So the first city that develops a fire holds those resources. July fourth takes a big toll because you're right, the other days, there are aerial fireworks, but nothing compared to July fourth. So we want to limit the strain on there. Um, we were fortunate last year, the structure fire in Walker, we were very quick to get to within a couple of minutes. But there is a huge advantage by being able, not just financially, but for the public safety to possibly move that a day or two. Um, obviously, that's just my input working on the fire department. I want to make sure you have fire department, you have a fire engine here in the city all day.
Yeah.
And that's kind of the strain that we're seeing along. Uh, in regards to illegal fireworks, I think everybody sees how many we have with one fire engine, some personnel. That's a very hard piece to enforce. So, um, but yeah, uh, Megan brought up some very valid points regarding this, but, uh, it does create a big strain on us having it on July fourth.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Chief, for that.
As I was saying, and for us, it's, uh, it's been standard for the sixteen years that I've been here. Um, we start with the fireworks probably two, three days before the fourth and go at, at least two or three days after, uh, the fourth. We plan on it every year. We're, we're kind of used to it every year. Um, so it's, it's not a, it's not a big deal for us like it is the fire folks, um, because they have to deal with the fires. We just deal with the illegal fireworks. Um, and the folks shooting guns off instead of, uh, fire lamps on the Fourth of July. But like I said, that, that starts before, it goes till after. Um, so we, we're used to it, we're, we're ready for, um, however it plays out with the city.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for those comments. So, so with that, I just want to make some comments and I know, um, I, I want to start off also by thinking, um, Pauline for her just tenacious.
I mean, speak louder, we can't hear back here.
Yes, okay. Thank you, Pauline. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me? Is it on? Yes. Okay, thank you. So I just want to start off by saying thank you, Pauline, for your tenacious efforts and being a staunch advocate for our community for many years and many areas and really making sure that our community has this Fourth of July event. And I just, you know, want to make sure that people understand that because without your participation and Eva as well, right? This wouldn't happen because it takes volunteers to make this happen. So with that said, I know that we had multiple discussions throughout the years, especially a groupful discussion, I think the last two years in terms of how do we not, how do we make sure that this doesn't keep coming up, right? That it doesn't feel like Pauline has to come up here every year and say, I need money because money is needed. Um, a- a- and they're able to do that. Our community is able to enjoy a Fourth of July, you know, festivities. But I also want to make sure that as we move on, and I know we've had discussions about it, but that we really find a solution. And that this doesn't go on till next year and the following year, but that, you know, we try to figure out what are the solutions? How do we move forward? You know, for, for years to continue, uh, to be able to provide this or not, or what level of this can we provide to our residents, um, with the concerns as well as Chief had mentioned is, you know, we, we spend this money and last year I know for me was I wanted, you know, I supported it, but also twenty thousand dollars is a lot of money to throw away in a couple of hours, right? Because we have so much need and I know, you know, we're trying to address everything and we're trying to be conscientious of what our residents need, but I also want to make sure that our residents know that if we are gonna, if we're, if we invest in money in this, then we want to make sure that our residents also invest in not, you know, you, having illegal fireworks, because it defeats a purpose. It's, we have a fireworks show that costs about twenty million to the city and to our residents, and then we have illegal fireworks at the same time. A- and that doesn't, I mean, I think we have to be really, uh, we have to be really clear that that's not, that's not okay. Um, so I think as a community, we also have to make a choice. What do we want? You know, um, I think we can't have both. One is illegal, so you can't have it anyway. So how do we really make sure that, that we address that and, and we minimize what happens in Fourth of July? And that we have mechanisms to be able to do that, the awareness and enforcement. You know, we've talked about how difficult it's been, but I think we have to come to one resolution. We have to come to a resolution of what is feasible, what can we do? How do we start now? That it's early enough before we get to July a- a- and then it's, you know, all hell breaks loose with the fireworks show. Um, so that's, you know, one of the things I, I want to make sure we have those conversations. And I also understand, as Megan had mentioned, you know, if we're going to move forward with this in terms of the city and really being conscientious because we're tasked to be able to do that and look at the city's liability, we would hate for something to happen and then we're liable for having a fireworks display without having the proper mechanisms, uh, to be able to address anything and, and we don't. I mean, we, this is supposed to be for fun. It's, I mean, for, you know, for residents, it's not supposed to be something that is detrimental to our community. So I think I want to be really, um, also understanding of Megan's concerns in regards to the sponsorship and of the city. If the council agrees, we want to do this, then how do we make sure that the sponsorship of the fireworks is really that taken upon the city? And that it's not the committee that has, uh, that oversight, that it really is a city's component. And if we commit to that, then the city's going to handle all of what that entails. Um, I know last year we also talked about moving it to a different date. And I know people probably don't want to do that, but we talked about, you know, last year, so what do we need to do? How do we get money? How do we start fundraising? What are the opportunities? So this doesn't happen every year. And so I, I want to make sure I know Eva and the committee and Pauline are really active, but I think there's there's an opportunity for us to, to be able to try to find a solution this year. How, how are we really going to move forward? So this doesn't continue to happen year after year. Um, and I think in terms of looking at, um, the opportunity to change the date may not be so bad, you know, because a lot of people, what I find is have festivities on there on other days, right? I mean, they have festivities on the Fourth of July, that's you and uh, uh, and so I think it's, you know, looking at, okay, so I know you guys do a fantastic job because last year was like all kinds of people, all kinds of bands and stuff. But given the situation with our financing and money and the fundraising, then it's an opportunity to maybe reimagine what that looks like. You know, can that be a, a, an opportunity for us once to look at a different date and is that cheaper, you know, uh, all around, but we still have that opportunity? I know King City does it on, on a different day and, and I'll tell you, I always go to King Cities. I, I go to Art City, but I also go to King Cities because they do it ahead of time, right? Um, and so it's another opportunity to enjoy that as well. So I know that they change theirs and they have a lot of people attending on the day that is not the Fourth of July. So I think for, for me, I would like to see a consideration of can we do it on a different day? How much less would that cost? Uh, and what would be the ki- the city's contribution? Because it may be that, you know, if we don't have, if we already went through the grant community process, which, you know, Councilmember Gavida mentioned for this year, and that's not a possibility, but looking out for next year. Um, or even if we look at the funding that we have as a council, every time we go through the, the budget process, there is an allocation that the council gets to select the different, um, you know, entities that we fund. We have an allocation for Hartnow College, right? Can we come back and say, hey, is there an allocation that we want to commit to as part of this? And if it's a five thousand dollar commitment, it's not as bad as a twenty thousand dollar commitment, right? That we're able to have, but looking at, I, I would really like to first look at before we, you know, um, looking at the, the financial considerations is, can we have it on a different date? Um, and what does that look like? How much, how much money does it cost? And, uh, and the city taking over the fireworks portion of it, what are our costs to that? What does that entail? Um, and then, you know, the committee, letting the committee do their portion in terms of the festivities and things that happen. Um, and really considering, really recommending, considering, you know, maybe scaling back because we, you know, you don't have the fund and, and let the community steps up or we work with other entities. Um, you know, we don't, we don't have that right now, so we don't have that commitment. And so I, I really would recommend that we first before, uh, we approve this, that we look at what it, what it would cost the city before, if we do it on a different date. Um, and looking at the resources available, because I know on that day of, of Fourth of July, there is a lot of movement going on and a lot of, a lot of pressure on our fire department. So um, and the possi- possibility as we're going into the budget season, would that be an opportunity depending on how much it would cost? And if it would be a five thousand commitment as opposed to a twenty thousand, um, a- and, uh, the city would take that on as a responsibility, well, uh, you know, what would that look like, Megan? When, is that, is that something we want to consider as a council? Um, instead of looking at the twenty, the ten thousand and the ten thousand, um, as Pauline mentioned. That comment, I know it's on, sorry.
Yeah. So, um, I think the, the cost, um, of changing the date is um, pretty significant reduction. Um, I might defer to, um, to Darlene, I think she did talk to them, um, about what they approximate.
They only said, they started out at twenty-five thousand and I asked them about changing the date. They said they brought it down to twenty thousand, but then today when I received the contract, um, it actually said Fourth of, the Fourth of July for twenty thousand. So I think they brought it down and they're leaving it at that. I don't think it's going to come down any further for, even for a change of date. Because they brought it down to five thousand already for us.
Hmm. Good. So that's not very significant. I thought it would be more significant.
No. She, she said that, that week is, so it's, it's in demand because they're of course, Fourth of July, but everybody's trying to change the date to get a lower price. So that, that week is just the twenty thousand, she, she thinks that's a good price for us. That's it.
Okay. So then my only concern, my other concern, Megan, would be, um, if we take on that responsibility and there's a shared cost, ten thousand and ten thousand, we need to get that money upfront, right? Or if, if the committee's saying they don't have the money right now and they're fundraising and we're going to approve a contract, but yet we don't have the funding already secured. I'm concerned about that as well. Not to say that they're not going to raise a fund, but I think it's important we don't enter into a contract when we don't have, we don't have secured funding.
Yeah, so I, I think the issue, um, is that, uh, time is of the essence because they, they need to, um, everyone is locking down Fourth of July dates right now. So there, there may be, uh, if we delay, we might not be able to lock, lock down the date. Um, if it's the desire of the com- um, council to provide some uh, support, uh, for the fireworks show, my suggestion might be that, uh, that we sponsor it, knowing that the cost could go as high as twenty thousand, but if the Fourth of July committee is willing to work with us and the Rotary is willing to work with us and, uh, provide contributions to that, then that will offset our twenty thousand. So it would reduce it, but we at least make sure that we um, have the liability insurance tied to it. Um, and I, you know, I think we could work together collectively to, to reduce that overall cost. I just don't know what that reduction would be. I guess it, it really depends on the success of the um, Fourth of July committee and the Rotary and other groups that we could ask to sponsor, sponsor the event. Um, and then maybe in future years, we look at, um, you know, a different, a different way of doing things. A different way of doing things, but, um, right now they're asking us to sign this contract. Yeah, and I'm worried about that without, you know. I'm I'm looking to see if if we wanted to to make that risk.
Okay.
Cause we're committing to the funding.
I think providing the deposit right off the bat, we have to get them ten thousand dollars.
The deposit for ten thousand dollars?
And and that's where the fundraising could come in to provide the second half.
When do we need the insurance?
Um, so I, and Asia has asked that we add, that when we know we are going to do this. We give them the pyrotechnics contract ASAP, uh, and not wait. Cause it'll, it'll take a little time to work out the.
Okay, so with that is is, you know, having that discussion, and I I, for me, and then. Open it up to the the council, um. I have a hard time with the twenty thousand, cause I think I know we did it last time with the condition that. We were gonna have something different this year, um, a- and I think as we now have the grants. Portion of the commu- the grant, the community grant system, that that could be an opportunity for. For the funding, uh, that doesn't have to take away with us, so I would not be comfortable with, you know, with twenty thousand. Um, if we're gonna, we're gonna commit as a council, say. Uh, the ten thousand and having the fund rate, having, ha- having us take on what we need to do. We take on that responsibility, um, and then next year, we, I think for next year for me, as I said, I wanna make sure. There's a viable way, pathway. So this doesn't come back again, and we're having the same discussion that we've had the last. Four years, five years, six years, at least since I've been on the council, you know, it's it's hard, it's hard to say no. Um, because I know that the community likes this, but I also wanna make sure that, you know, we have so much stuff going on and we have a lot of programs and. Y- you know, the community wants this, and I think there's also a request for us to go out to the community. You know, if there's an opportunity to fundraise, give money, so that way we can have this. And it doesn't fall on, you know, the public funds and dollars that we can spend utilizing for other. You know, recreation programs, youth services. For the the one day of the firework show, and I also wanna make sure that there's a commitment. That our community understands that by doing this, we also are requesting that there is. You know, that there's a reduction in the illegal fireworks, and if that doesn't get reduced, then there, I I feel really uncomfortable. Of having allocated money. To a firework show where there's so much illegal fireworks, and and it doesn't, I mean, for me, it just doesn't make sense, it doesn't make sense. Um, and I appreciate the committee for everything they've done, um, and, but, a- and it's separate, two separate things, you know. What they do in terms of the. Um, activities and then the firework show, so it's just making sure that we're separating that and for us as a city, so. Uh, I I would, that's my recommendation, if we wanna move forward, is to not commit no more than the ten thousand. And, um, we assume, we take, you know, the firework show would be our ours. And we look for other sponsors to be able to see if there's even a more greater reduction than the ten thousand, so if we can spend less than the ten thousand. Then we spend less than the ten thousand. So, I'll open it up for comments.
I, I will disagree, I I think that the city. Will not go bankrupt if we utilize twenty thousand dollars for this show. And, um, I've been attending the show for a long time, like in in King City as well, and. Greenfield and, but the, the common, the common, um. Item in that is children. Most, most, most of the people that that go and watch this, uh, shows are children, we cannot. From my perspective, we cannot say, oh, if there is a lot of illegal, il- illegal, um. Fireworks, we cannot give you this show, because there's two different people. The adults who are irresponsible and and buy those fireworks, and the children who are expecting. Uh, a show. And I think I personally don't see, don't see a. Maybe it's because I'm not open in the finances, but I don't see, I don't see, um. Something bad with using twenty thousand out of our funds to to give, um. The only day of our community that that will celebrate, I agree. You know, I have to listen to Chief, I agree that we should, we should probably change the date, so that, so that they are, um. So that we feel more safe, that we're gonna have the resources to to help our community. But, um, I also wanna wanna add that, that committee will have a lot more to do, cause they have to. They also have to fundraise for the, for the event, for the, for the music, for the, all this, that involves work. And, yes, I would like to encourage all the organizations and this, and local businesses. To contribute a little bit with, uh, with, uh, I will say, not a little bit, but enough, so that we. So that we all can have a celebration, um. Don't forget that we're celebrating our independence. Now, it's not just a celebration, it's not just a day, it should be a celebration, because. We brag that we are free, that we are the food, that that, that our country is the the. The freest country in the world, but yeah, we don't wanna invest in providing that service, and, uh. That's, that's my position, I think I will. Understand if you don't agree with me, but I I think we should, we should provide and then have our staff. Get together with the committee and plan for the next, next years, I mean. If, um, if we cannot, if we not, if we cannot, um, maintain this, then, then we can. Allow them, but I I don't see. I don't think it's right that we, that we wanna contribute only with five thousand dollars and take over the whole thing. Tell them how to do it and what to do, but, um, it's just my opinion.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Uh, yes, thank you, um, final, final thoughts for me, um, I. I think to me, right now, I I feel like I don't have all the information that I need in order to make a decision, um, I. Do recall, like, uh, like the mayor, I think, or probably all the ones that were here last year, when when this came to us, but. I I do recall a lot of the discussions that we had, and and yeah, this sounds almost exactly like, like it did, um. Last year, and so I really would love to see the minutes from last year, I do remember, and I wish that. Um, council member Inennis was here, because I remember he was very passionate about this when we discussed it, um. Last year, and then also, um, to me, it's again, it's the expensive, it's, you know, the insurance. Um, being in the thousands, I would like to know exactly how much, um, that insurance is. Um, also, I think, um. You know, with with having our 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 chiefs, um, tied up, and I'm pretty sure I wasn't the only one getting. The constant complaints about illegal fireworks, and not just on Fourth of July, but for. Months, I was gonna say weeks, literally months before and months after, we're getting these, um. These complaints and the the comments that they were giving, which I I don't agree with, but I'll say I'm just, um. To put it out there, was people saying, the, you know, how can the Solid Ed Police Department not see the fireworks? How can they not hear, and why aren't they going, um, and so, you know, again, that's something that. Um, you know, uh, I I don't wanna see our 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 PD, um, you know, tied up, especially not on. On the Fourth of July, if we do it that day. Um, and also, I think, seeing, having the police officers out and patrolling, I'm pretty sure it's gonna deter. People that have, um, illegal fireworks, it will probably also deter, um, people that have done, which, um. You know, with the recent events that happened in South County, that's a very real, unfortunately, a very real. Um, you know, a a thing that we have to, to to think about as city leaders. Um, and then when it comes to our staff, um, which I know was a suggestion on my report, having our staff. You know, kinda helping out and asking for donations, I believe that as as, you know. We're asking for donations already when it comes to our community center, I believe, we have like a whole campaign asking for money for our community center. Um, you know, for, I wa- I believe it's for our kitchen, and you know, um, something that's gonna help our our performing arts and and help our children. As well, um, also, our our solid ed council commissioners also have another. Um, uh, I I guess another event that they're working on, which is the five K. After the five K, I know that they're also asking for donations from businesses, from the public, in order to be able to get funding. For their school track, um, and again, the solid ed council is under our umbrella, I believe. Um, and then the last event that I could think of, we're. Where we're currently asking our our community and our businesses. Um, for donations or sponsorships is the Solid Ed Hot Summer Days, and that's something that I'm very passionate about, because it has. Uh, it involves the youth, um, violence prevention and and helps. I I I think in two ways, it helps first of all to. Uh, give our young ones something to preoccupy themselves with, and you know, hopefully they get into cars, into rollerbladers classics, and that'll take. Their time, their money, um, which is something good to redirect them to something positive, um, and then also. Um. Uh, and then also, it it helps us get funding for youth violence prevention programs, and unfortunately. You know, we have the the two, um, young men that that we lost in a solid ed due to violence, and then we have. The people over, um, you know, in in King City who. Who also, you know, due to violence, um, lost their lives, so. And to me, I I I really would want all that information. Um, just to be transparent with our public, um, I'm, I go and see the fireworks, and you know, um. I would totally support our our Fourth of July committee, whether it's volunteering and going and doing the work. Um, and I think I have mentioned it to to them before, um, whether it's, you know. Rowing up my sleeves, doing whatever it is that they need, or whether it's donating or or in any way or capacity that I can help. Um, but that's me on a, on a personal, I'm not, not as a, as a city leader, so. To me, I really would like to, I know we're pressed for time, but I really feel, would feel more comfortable with pushing this for our next meeting and being able to have. Input from all the council.
Yeah, oh, no, I was just gonna say this is not an hour, not an hour for time.
Are you done?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, with that and recommendation and action item, I mean, not a, not a, an action item, but a recommendation, I think I wanna go back to. Um, you know, thank you for your comments on both sides and council member Cabada as well, and, uh, Mayor Potem. Um, I I I, I'll go back to saying, I. I think this is something that's really important to our community, and it has been for many years. I wanna look at if this is what we wanna do, how we support it. I I'm still would recommend, you know, um, looking at the possibility. If we had said we were gonna donate ten thousand, and the committee was gonna pick up the other thousand, that we look at that. Um, and for me, it would be no more than the ten thousand, and maybe I have to wait till council member Cabada comes. And so just so we finalize, this is not an action item for tonight, but it's for recommendation, and I'll make my, I'll, I'll make my comments in terms of. Um, you know, what, how we can move forward to try to figure out, um. You know, looking at the different perspectives of the council and taking that into consideration. Um, I still think, you know, since the the committee is still fundraising, and the discussion was for ten thousand and ten thousand. Um, that we move forward with the ten thousand, not the twenty thousand, and if there's a way that there's more money that can be fundraised. Then that hopefully can lessen the ten thousand dollar cost. Um, and being able to, also with that said, is, um. How do we not come back next year on this? Um, with, and that there's an opportunity to be able to, I don't know if it's work with the committee. Develop an ad hoc committee, or I know we have, you know, our our other committees that we have. But to ensure that there's a, uh, there's an opportunity for the city to be able to. To work with the committee in terms of how do we make sure that the funding is available there, is it long term sustainable, and if it's not, then. Um, you know, the city needs to come back and make a decision of its contributions, cause I do know that. You know, we have a lot, especially with our recreation department and a lot of our facilities that. Um, you know, we want to provide the entertainment to our community, but I also think it's important for us. As as public servants to be able to look at what's needed in our communities in terms of. Uh, our own facilities, our our road infrastructure, our public facilities. Um, and that there's an opportunity to engage other sponsorships to make sure that this. Becomes more of that kind of a sponsorship opportunity as opposed to the city paying, paying for the funds. Um, so I I would. Megan, if we can come back to look at that possibility, and that the city's gonna take on the ten thousand, the city has to take on the sponsorship. What does that look for us in terms of our liability, and what are the total costs? So I think that's the other thing, is the ten thousand, but what are the total costs? And how, wh- what are the possibilities of, um. Of offsetting some of those costs, working with with the committee. And I know it's not gonna come back to us, but I wanna agendize it maybe for another time, is, I know you talked a lot about the illegal fireworks. And so before Fourth of July, coming back and looking at our existing ordinance, we've seen it before, but. You know, what else can we do with that ordinance, can we increase fines, what are some of the other teeth that we can add? To the ordinance, because we have discussed how how much that has impacted. And last year, obviously, because of the fire, so what other instruments are available to us, I know. It's really hard, because you have to get people in the act, and by the time the police department gets there. You know, they're gone, and it's not, you know, for our community to understand that it's not that the, our officers are not looking at it. And are disregarding what's happening, it's, we don't have, we don't have the enforcement. And, you know, um, there's really true, um. You know, consequences, but but there's a lot of criteria, right, officers have to be able to see it, to visualize it, people have to. And have to be able to, um, to testify, and that hasn't happened in the last several years in my community, so. I would like to bring back the ordinance to take a look at it before Fourth of July, in terms of what else can we amend or, um, update in that. Or on that ordinance that we have currently. So, do you have any? Comments, Megan, questions before we move forward, um?
Yeah, um. I just wanted to clarify, uh, one thing, it's, uh. Other than a potential budget amendment, um, to add monies. Uh, for this event, which I'd have to look at, it, it does fall under my spending authority, so. Um, I know traditionally, we've. You know, we've asked for direction as city managers, because this is a big expense, and we didn't wanna make that, um. Decision without sort of guidance, so, um. It would be helpful to know, I mean, we can wait, and I cannot sign anything, you know, until it comes back on the twentieth. Um, but, um. What has been presented to me is a, a, is a contract and a commitment for a deposit. Uh, which is fine, I think if we do delay, there is a bit of a risk that we may not have a Fourth of July show. Um, which is fine, um, I just, I just wanted to put that out there, that the pyrotechnics people have been. Calling us every day, saying, are you, you know, are you moving forward, cause we have other people out there who want to. Uh, have a show.
Yeah, so, so with that, then what you're saying is, we can't wait till the March twentieth?
Um, if we wait, we just might not lock in, lock in the show. Um, I can sign the contract and pay the deposit if if it's the interest of this body to have. A show that would only be the ten thousand, um, and then we could come back. Um, after speaking with, um, the Fourth of July committee, and a plan that they would raise the the other. Um, that might be an approach, but. I just wanted to be fully transparent that we, if we wait, we might not get the show, maybe that, maybe there. That's being truthful, I don't know, but I just wanted to put that out there.
One of your creation, uh, just, if. Let's go into the if world, if, um, yes, you mentioned that it's within your discretion. If it was just for you, would you pay the twenty thousand dollars and move on with the contract?
Well, I wouldn't do that without this body, I I think I need to.
Do we have, do we have the means, do we have the means for doing that? I, I know that, that. The, uh, involvement of the, uh, the council, but do we have the means to do that twenty thousand?
There is some, um, budget in the council, um. Line item for sponsorship of events. Um, I'm not sure about the twenty thousand, but I, I do think that there is a budget, um, for ten thousand.
Through the chair. So are you suggesting that you would actually enter the contract on behalf of the city and then pay for the, the, the half of the deposit, the ten thousand dollars?
Um, that, that would be. The ten thousand.
I mean, that, that's not. That's not what we have agenda. We have this as a direction only. Issue. And, and so are you just sort of seeking some confirmation from the council members as to whether or not. They're going to bite your head off if you decide to exercise your discretion?
Ba- basically, that, that, that is exactly right.
One, one of the other issues I think that we also need to figure out, and I don't know what the, the record is of the committee to, in terms of fundraising. Um. And whether or not, you know, if the city signs the contract for ten, then we're obligated to make the other half of the deposit after the Fourth of July. And if the fundraising isn't successful and raising ten thousand dollars, then we're going to be on the hook for having to pay that balance. So, um.
And that, that would come at the day after July fifth, as when they give us the invoice.
Thank you for clarifying that, Mike. So I guess so we can move on. It's ten twenty. We still have two more items on the agenda. And again, I, you know, I don't want to have this discussion. I hope that this council doesn't want to have this discussion. Again, next year and that we really find a solution of how we move forward. So we don't have this discussion again next year. Um, so I, I, you know, Megan, your discretion is to buy ten thousand. I'm comfortable with ten. I'm not comfortable with twenty. And if, if. The decision is to, or the consideration, because it's a consideration for sponsoring. Yes, we want to sponsor for this year. At what level? The, the ten thousand. And then it's, uh, uh, coming upon the committee to be able to raise the remainder of, of the, the funds needed. And we, as you mentioned, there is discretionary budget funds, you know, we're going to go through the budget, uh. Workshop in that we look at that funding that is available to be able to look at that. And the council has to come back and say. That's going to be one of the budget items and there's other stuff that's not going to get funded. So are we clear with that?
Um, yes, I was just gonna say, I appreciate, um, Mayor, your, your ten thousand dollars. You know that you're comfortable with that amount. Um, I think for me, uh, you know, in nine months, I believe that it was brought up that five thousand dollars was raised in nine months, if I'm correct. Um, and so in four months. They're going to have to raise ten thousand more or five thousand more. Because they did say that there's downtime they have to pay. So I guess that's my concern. If you can't raise ten thousand in nine months. How are you going to be able to raise that in four months? And so, you know, more than likely. We would probably get stuck either with the contract and ten thousand now or have to. Put that in.
So thank you, thank you for, for your comments on that. So I think for, for me, I think what we're looking tonight is. What are we, what are we trying to, like, if we're, we're going to consider this to sponsor at what level? Um, and then I, you know, obviously the committee is going to have to work on what they need to work on to, to get there and, um. I, I think that's, that's, you know, what's before us is. Are we comfortable with the ten thousand as, uh, and. Making sure that that's our contribution. And then the committee is their contribution, how they get that, where they get that, what they do. That's, I think that's not. On this discussion for tonight, but if we're committed to that, I'm, you know. Um, I know they come through in the past, so it's never been an issue. Um, in, in the years that at least I've been, you know, here, um. But I, but this is why I want to make sure we don't have this discussion again and that there's a way that we find, how is this going to happen without us having. A forty minute discussion on, on the, the Fourth of July firework. It's just not, I, I think it's just not. You know, at the end of the day, if we need to scale back, they'll figure out what they need to do. Um, but I want to make sure, are we comfortable with the ten thousand? Because. That's less than what the. The twenty thousand, I'm not comfortable with that and that, and, um, and then the rest of it. The committee would pay for. And we, we secure all of the. We handle all of the firework. Portion of it. Location and everything else that does not go to the subcommittee, the committee, that's the city's responsibility and the city's. To make sure that we are, um, making sure that we are lessening the liability risk of anything that should happen. So council, any?
But do, do you realize that if we do that's went back to ten thousand dollars? And the committee doesn't come, comes, come through with the money, we're still stuck without contract and we cannot tell them. Oh, you know what? Go to the committee because we signed a contract. That is, that is, that is what I'm trying to, uh, tell you. If we put ten thousand dollars and we sign a contract. The country doesn't say, oh, go ask that, they have the, the committee for the rest. It's the city. Still it is the city, right?
It is the city, but other alternatives, we don't fund it. I mean, I'm not comfortable. I've already said it and I'm not. I'm not comfortable with twenty thousand because I know that's a lot of money. And the last year's discussion was. We're not going to, we're, we're, we're trying not to put in as much money. We did it last year, but. If they, the commitment and what they stated tonight was they were going to fundraise the ten thousand. Um, to be able to meet the, the twenty thousand that is needed, then let them raise the ten thousand. And our portion is the ten thousand. So that way we're able to have something. And, and whatever they decide of what they need to do. Or the other alternative council, we don't fund it. We don't fund it and, um. We move on. I mean, there, the. There has to be, we will have to come to some kind of agreement and we have to be able to come to some kind of terms in terms of what are we willing to compromise? I, you know.
You say, I say twenty, you say ten. So if we want to compromise, let's go fifteen. Cause if, if we, if we go for twenty, we're not compromising because you're doing what I say. But if we do ten, we're not really compromising. Because that's not, that's the money that you put. Let's do fifteen then.
But they said ten. They didn't say they wanted fifteen. So why would I give them fifteen when they said they wanted ten?
Okay, then, then.
You know.
There is no discussion. Let's move on. Let's go home.
Yeah, uh, through the chair, I think, um, what I'm hearing is that you're comfortable. With us locking it down, paying the deposit. It looks like the Fourth of July committee is willing to work. Uh, getting the ten. And what we can do in my verbal report is I can give an update, um, on where we are. Each, you know, once a month during council as to, so you can have some comfortability that, you know, progress is being made if that, if that makes sense.
That makes sense to me. Does it make sense the rest of the council? So we can move on. I'm kind of the ten thousand, I would like against signing their, their contract. Okay, Councilmember Gavira?
Do we need, um?
So we don't need a motion?
We don't need a motion.
We, it, yeah, I mean, it's, we have a very odd situation. It's the only way I can describe it. We have a staff report that specifically said we are not taking action. You are not taking action. You're just providing direction. And the direction I think that you're providing is it's okay with us if you exercise your discretion to spend, uh. Ten thousand dollars in entering into this contract. I, I would suggest that we bring it back for ratification at the, uh, the next, uh, company.
Okay. Does that make it clear?
And then we can also at that time discuss. Unfortunately, um, oh, not for forty minutes, but the, the other issues that you raised and maybe, uh, address some of those concerns.
With the ordinance, yeah.
And, and bring back the cost of the insurance article.
Thank you. And then can I put it on the minutes so we can get recorded that. We don't want to do this again next year. That there has to be a mechanism. That we're entering into this, but there has to be a mechanism on how this becomes sustainable without it coming back for the council. Yeah. This for, for me, my minutes, my record. Thank you. So, okay. Thank you. Thank you, council, and thank you, Pauline, for enduring that lengthy conversation as well. And thank you for all you do, um, for the community. Okay. So we'll move on, council, with the other item, which is. Item B three, consideration of funding and site plan for a new fire apparatus bay and, uh. Thank you, chief. I will turn it over to, to me.
Yeah. Quick presentation and then I have, uh. I, I think they're bringing it up. So, um, thank you. And this is also in the, in the item that I'm seeking, uh, direction for. Uh, it's, it's related to, um, the construction of a new fire apparatus bay. Um, next slide. So, um, I think everyone's aware that the city received, um, a two million dollar state earmark from Senator Caballero. So. Thank you to, uh, to her generosity. Uh, we were able to purchase a fire ladder truck. Um, and there was, um, funding that at the time was thought enough to finance the apparatus bay that it would be located in. Um, so a ladder truck is necessary to support, I think, the, the city's future development and. Really kind of excitingly, we have, um. Uh, we're working on a hotel, which is going to planning commission, I think in, in a week or so. Um, for a C U P. So we would need it for a hotel, uh, which I believe that hotel would be four stories. Um, the existing fire station is, is as it is, and now it's old and it's too small. For the, the new fire truck, which hasn't arrived yet, but, um, is scheduled to arrive in December. The fully equipped ladder truck, um, costs the city a little, uh, over one point seven million. Uh, and clearly, this is such a significantly expensive investment, we surely want to protect it in a. A secure, um, climate controlled, uh, space. Um, so hence why we need the apparatus bay. Um, so we did hire, um. In studio architecture, um, to help us, um, design. The apparatus bay council, um, may have remember, um, back a year ago, um, you, uh, designated fifty five thousand dollars for. For the firm to work on this. Um, so after taking into account our architectural expenses and the cost of the, um, fire truck. Um, we have, uh, an estimate for the apparatus bay of a little bit over a million dollars. And the city with all those costs is short about a little bit, almost nine hundred thousand, not quite nine hundred thousand. Um, I probably don't need to go into too much detail, not fully, but, um, I kind of discussed what the benefits are. And the reason why we have to, we can't put the apparatus bay elsewhere is we have. Fire response times that we have to make. Uh, and then the fire personnel are housed. Uh, in the fire station. So hence we can't, we can't really move. That apparatus bay except one location, which is next to the fire station. Um, we did kind of look at different plans, which I'm, I'm going to talk a, a little bit about, uh. So next slide. So this is the existing, um. Uh, buildings that exist, um, on the, the fire station, the, the, um, historically significant jail. Um, and so you can kind of see the, the whole, um, fire setup as it currently is. Uh, the park and next to it. Um, next slide. So, um, after it was determined that the jail couldn't be moved, um. Where we're looking to put the fire apparatus bay is where the current driveway is off of Monterey Street, which is shown in that. It's that pink, um, structure, um, shown, um. There and, uh, I think the uterus is, um, circling it. Um, so that's, that's one of the proposals. Um, you would actually work to have, um. The, the police department exit out of Main Street. Um, and. We are doing that because it's a better circulation plan and it ensures that fire and. P V aren't exiting at the same location off of Monterey Street. Um, I will admit that, uh, in terms of studying this, we are going to have to look at. Um, which is already an issue, quite frankly, but looking at maybe, um. Uh, eliminating some of the parking spaces off of Main Street. Um, this is kind of a great, um, plan for us because we can secure the police and fire areas. Um, and make sure that, you know, uh, to provide better security, make sure that only authorized personnel are in those areas. Um, the next option. Um, the secondary option. Which, um, quite frankly, we, uh, internally don't like as much, but is a possibility is having. Police and fire, um, exit off of Monterey Street. As you can see, it would result in, um, taking, um, part of the park in order to allow for that. Um, plan, um. And, um, we, we really try to preserve the oak tree. Um, so there would be a question about. If that oak tree could be preserved. Um, so those are, those are kind of the two alternative, um. Plans. And actually the architect is here, um, and you know, I think we're, we're. Very close to going out to bid. We want to go out to bid as soon as possible because, um, this. Apparatus bay needs to be built by, um. By December of this year. And we're actually hoping to order the, the metal structure ahead of time to, to kind of save, um, time. Uh, because the metal structure is, tends to be on back order. So while we work out some of the site plan details, we are also looking to be, to bid out the, um, the metal structure. Um, so that, um, I think concludes most of my presentation. I've already kind of gone through the costs. You can kind of see the breakdown on this slide. Um, we did. After, uh, receiving the two million dollar earmark, we did have two hundred and eighty four thousand, uh, remaining. So, um, after doing the math of our estimate of the approximate, um, cost of the apparatus bay. Um, we're looking for the city to weigh in on, um. How we would fund this, um. This, you know, cost that we didn't anticipate. It does so happen that, uh, we are looking at bringing back, um. The, the ARPA funds for consideration, um, to council, um. Next, next meeting. Um, we are looking at. Potentially, uh, postponing a pipeline, which we're not sure that we actually need. So we might, that might free up funding. Um, we've also, I think council's aware that, um, I've also sought out, um, different earmarks that requested, um, from. Um. Uh, different, uh, state federal funds. The challenge we have with the earmark is. That it may not come in the time that we need in order to build the facility. For the ladder truck. So, um, I'm also looking at some, you know, direction on fund sources of funding. So the two things I'm looking for is kind of site plan, um. Feedback and then also on the funding sources. And, um, with that, um. I can take questions and I, I don't know if, um, if either. The chiefs want to say anything or, uh, Lee wants to say anything about the, um, site plans.
No.
Yeah, unless you have another question here.
Okay. So let me just, let me, for the sake of, let me make sure that I take it off to the public first and then I'll bring it back to the council. Um, any members of our public that are here joining us still in our chambers, uh, wish to make any comments on item B dash. Three. Okay. Seeing that, then I'll take it, uh, to those that are joining us via Zoom, uh, want to make any comments on item, uh, B dash three. Okay. So with that, I'll close the public comment period, um, and bring it back to council for. Questions, um, and concerns before we go into comments. And so just to clarify, this is just, uh, cons, uh, item. For consideration of providing the feedback on the funding and site plan for the new apparatus. So we're not taking action.
Correct, correct. We, uh, eventually you would take action once we solicit bids. Um, and then you would approve the, the contract.
Okay, perfect.
And if I could ask, maybe it would be helpful to put the two, the site plans. And if I could ask, maybe it would be helpful to put the two, the site plans up, because it's probably, you know, yeah.
Okay, so let, let me start with, um, council, uh, Mayor Protem. Uh, for another, if you have any comments or concerns.
Okay, you have your questions outside of the question. Yeah, we're doing it the same and then the final is a.
Yeah, um, so, um, the question that I, that I have, um, is to, to Megan, and, um, first of all, thank you for for the slideshow and the presentation. Um, which of the three options do you recommend?
So our preference, um, is to, um, to preserve the park and to have, um, the, the police, um, go out. I think that Main Street is, is the plan and the fire department would go out on Monterey. That way we segregate the, you know, not all, the emergency vehicles exiting all at once. I mean, it can create a little bit of a challenge there. Um, so that's, that's the, the preference of police and fire.
So option one?
The option two.
Okay.
And I think we still have to make a few tweaks to the site plan. Yeah, Main Street. So it's a little confusing because that's showing out of solid app, but it actually would go, the arrow would go on Main Street.
That would be no way different.
This one? Okay, so the apparatus would come out here.
There'll be traffic for police.
So if you can see, uh, where six is, uh, five, I think, I can't read if it's six or five. But the pink building is the new apparatus base. The apparatus would just be able to come directly out to Monterey and then the existing fire station is where the existing fire traffic already. So that would remain the same. They, they would come out of Monterey. It would just be, it's that we would divert of the police who normally are coming out of Monterey to, on that driveway. We would divert them to Main Street.
That's only a question I have. Okay, thank you.
I saw a couple. Uh, and this one, for instance, right now, the other one.
Uh, option two.
Right there, right there is the same. Uh, that little portion next to the pink, um, that's not jail?
Yeah.
So we're keeping that jail.
Yes.
And how about the, the space behind that? Are we, we have a particularly useful that space? So.
Just to clarify, so, um, if you look at the number six, the, the best idea, Chief Watson and I kind of worked on the schematic of this. Again, this is the general site plan. You guys would get the finalized version. We're gonna, the plan that staff would like is to move the apparatus bay further up towards the P D, so that the fire truck, I apologize for walking away, the fire truck would enter through here and come out. So there's no backing up, if that makes sense. P D would come through this way, out to Main Street. So what we want to do is prevent fire and P D going out together on emergency incidents and prevent the public from being in line of either apparatus. Does that make sense?
People will never go, uh, in reverse.
Correct. Yeah, this is a forty-five foot truck. So if you see the fire engine today, they got a block, turn their lights on. The way that Chief and I developed this is the fire truck would actually come off solid and enter the police compound and make a left and they would drive right through the apparatus bay, which would eliminate any issues with the public for us.
Thank you.
And then that number seven going toward solid ad would not be there. And that would actually correlate with what we have today, the eucalyptus, eucalyptus trees that were dropped. The oak tree that's been there for years and years would not, that would still be in place.
Thanks for that. The other thing that I, I, and it's probably more my concern, because you guys have this, I, I cannot picture the whole thing. And you, you probably know more and will make that, I'm sure, a grant, uh, free decision into part of the structure. But the, my concern is that the, um, the frame, the metal frame, are we gonna, um, request that to be built and then we just fix it for here or how is that?
Yeah, so we, it's, uh, it's a prefabricated metal stru- structure. So it would, it would be brought in and plopped on the site.
Do we have local, uh, companies that do that?
Um, I, yeah, I live.
Yeah.
Answer.
My turn. Okay, thank you for having me. Louis Marge is in City Architecture. Um, yes, to answer your, your question. So the idea is to put out an RFP or a proposal, uh, request so that we can receive companies. I've, uh, already fielded a few local companies that do it. Um, we have local contractors that have contracts with the manufacturers that manufacture the building. Um, so the request would go out for the metal building, the erection of the metal building and the foundation. Um, and then the site work would be separate afterwards. Um, and speaking to, um, three different contractors locally, um, they're all interested, um, and they all recommended the same kind of package because then it makes sense for them to put together the bid proposal that, that would work together. Yeah.
Yeah, with that kind of money, I'd rather stay in that, in the area than.
Yeah, and that's, that's, oh, we do have the, the capacity locally to do it. We're hoping that that's the bits that come in.
Oh, wonderful, yeah.
Yeah, so, but it'll be a total bidding, yeah, so we're not.
Yeah, so when I was reading the report, I could imagine, well, if we have publicators that are in the area, they, they could, uh, that is, is pretty much.
Yeah.
Small.
Yeah, and, and some of them, what they do is they have their contracts with various manufacturers. Some of it doesn't get manufactured locally, but they get shipped and then they get erected by the local contractors and purchased.
Perfect, perfect.
Thank you.
And, um, one thing I did want to mention is we're also looking to see if we can, you know, have maybe a more effective color, because it is a pre, um, prefabricated building or maybe even some artwork to, so that it's not just.
Thank you, thank you, Megan. Um, thank you for answering this question. I, I think for me, I just, I thank you for putting these renderings together. I, you know, ob- obviously option two seems the recommended path in terms of just, you know, safety reasons and making sure there's an exit and entrance. And I think it helps because we still preserve the park, um, and preserve some of those elements. And given that the lot across the street is designated for housing, I think that park is going to be really important to be able to make sure that we retain that, um, and that we, that we have the capacity. So in terms of the funding, so on the design, I'm, I'm good with option two and obviously it'll come, final will come back for us. And it seems like there's, the flow of traffic, uh, obviously safety is our primary, primary concern to making sure, um, that's safe for our first responders, but it's also safe for our public. Um, uh, in terms of the funding, Megan, and just in the funding direction, um, that you considered and potential funding sources, I know that you're seeking a district earmark funds from our different legislators, given that there's obviously, uh, a state deficit. We're not sure whether that would be possible or not, um, but that is one of the considerations. And then, I don't know if there's other, um, you know, I know we have Townsend that is supporting us in terms of grants and making sure that maybe this becomes one of the priorities of looking for, uh, public facilities grants or grants in terms of, um, the, because it's, it has to be for a public facility, right? Because we're doing the apparatus bay or, um, or for public safety to make sure that we have the capacity to look at other funding sources for that. Um, and even in terms of our budget, if we have to look at some of those budget allocations and we have some ARPA funding that's going to come back to us and that the council can look at. If, if we have an infusion of that, then the dollars that we spend, um, that are going to be less, because we do have an allocation and what we need to request should be less than that. I'm excited. I just, that's all I have to say is I'm, you know, I'm really super excited. And given the fact that this is, that we have a potential hotel that is going to be more than three stories, I think this is one of the exciting pieces about why the apparatus with the ladder was really critical, is to allow its also economic development opportunities and also the housing densities, right? Once we, we're ready for that, um, that it helps us to really transform into the city that, well, you know, provides the needs for our community. So, um, those are my comments and I think we gave you, I think, do you have enough recommendations?
Yeah, I think, uh, what I'm hearing is like, you'd be interested in looking at ARPA because of course we want to spend those down and this is actually a more shovel-ready, short-term project. Um, but we should be looking for grants and aggressively looking for other funding sources and that you agree with option two with the site plan, um, which is really helpful. Um, and we will, you know, come back to the more finalized site plan. Um, the only thing I did just want to give warning is that we might have to lose some of the parking spaces um, next to the driveway coming out of Main, um, for safety purposes. So.
And does it change? Um, if I may, I did have a question. I, I did speak on the options, but I didn't speak regarding the financial consideration and all that. You did ask for, um, for, um, what's it called, our, uh, our opinions on that. Um, and I guess to me, I was just wondering, um, on the ARPA funds, do you have any idea where we would be pulling that money from? Only because I did know that, um, the community was, uh, we did do outreach as a city to get community input on where they, you know, where wanted the ARPA funds to go to. And I was taking into consideration when I was the council was deciding where I was going, so.
Yeah, so we're gonna, uh, so we'll bring that back on the twentieth for discussion and we'll give you some options and explain, um, the, um, pipeline, the Kidder-Soladep pipeline. Um, it, it's not maybe needed as we thought, so that's why we're.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So with that, then I think there's, um, uh, there is no motion to be made. So I think we, you have sufficient information, so we can, one, okay, so thank you for that. Thank you, Chief, uh, for all your work and can't wait till we get the ladder truck. So, uh, we'll move on to item B dash four, consideration of entering into a random understanding with the county of Monterey for the development of a transitional age youth campus program, um, tailored for parenting youth. And we have our new housing analyst.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mayor and Council. This is, um, Vierter Castillo, your new housing analyst. And I got it for the first, this is my first printed presentation and I got to enjoy the entire meeting. On your last item?
Enjoy, thank you for that.
Your last item, so this is J A W, this is a housing, innovative housing project, so housing is fun and I hope that that makes it appealing. Uh, so the title for this, uh, is, uh, consideration of entering into a MOU memorandum of understanding with the county of Monterey for the development of a transitional age youth campus program. Um, a little bit of background on this, uh, this is some funding that the county of Monterey has, um, uh, back in twenty twenty-two, the Coalition of Homeless Services partnered with Youth with Lift Experience, uh, to submit an application to HUD, Community Project Fund, for, uh, to obtain HUD, uh, Community Funding Fund, uh, Community Project Funding. And in twenty twenty-three, the application was, was successful. The, uh, the county received two million dollars. Uh, and that county has identified the South County and that was part of their proposal to obtain this money. Uh, that we don't have as many services that are born within our jurisdiction, right? They usually branch out and we tend to be, uh, South County can be a service desert for some of these services, especially for youth experiencing homelessness. So from the moment that they submitted the application, uh, they had identified South County as the area that was going to be served with this kind of money and that they were going to work with jurisdictions in South County. Uh, so, um, by being granted this money, uh, the county wants to establish the Transitional Age Youth, uh, program. And they reached out to Solidad mainly because we have a diverse housing stock uh, and because we provide, we are developing more units. So they reached out to us, um, to partner to create this, what we call, because we needed one more acronym at almost eleven eight P M, a T A E program. So you're going to hear me say T A E program. This is the Transitional Age Youth, uh, program. Uh, and so to give a little bit more of a background of what the T A E program is or how it was approached in the application that the county successfully got funded, um, it will have two components. Uh, one component will be for permanent supportive housing for youth, uh, Transitional Age Youth. Uh, and it will also cre- create a drop-in center. So I'm going to separate the two of them because they each have their own components. So under the permanent supportive housing, what it means is that we are trying to purchase, uh, four units uh, of permanent housing, supported permanent housing. We are looking at La Vivienda, uh, they will have a four-plex that all of them are market rate. So we want to make sure that we secure that four-plex so that we have four units for, um, Transitional Age Youth, um. The idea is that the Monterey County Housing Trust will be the owner of this unit. Um, but that the city will count these units towards our regional housing needs allocation numbers. Uh, so that will help us, uh, with, with our report every year to meet our goal. So the eligible participants for this permanent supportive unit, uh, will need to be cute that are either pregnant or quarantined between the ages of eighteen and twenty-four and that they have a documented disability. This will be physical or, um, cognitive disability, doesn't have to be just physical. Uh, and the participant will have to contribute thirty percent of their income toward the rent. So that's the first component. The second piece, uh, of this program is the drop-in center, which will be a great resource for our community. If you think about it, this will be a drop-in center that will be in the city of Solidad. The county will assist in identifying a location, but it will be in our community. And the services that will be provided through this center are not exclusive to only the participants of the permanent supportive housing. This can be for anybody else, um, and I have it listed right here. But pretty much wraparound services, uh, case management, rapid rehousing, um, a very important, I think, service that our community can benefit from is the enrollment to what we call mainstream service benefits, which could be unemployment or, um, enrollment to medical. Those kinds of, uh, supportive services will be included in this drop-in center. Um, also, they will assist with education, family, uh, reunification or family, um, location, parenting classes, uh, life skill coaching, and you can see all of the other ones. I just wanted to go to the ones that are here in the community at the forum often. So, uh, we will like to enter into this MOU so that we can define or we can outline clear, uh, roles and responsibilities for the county and for the city. What does it mean for us, um, and what does it mean for them? So I want to make, I want to make it clear that the funding for this program will come from the county. We are not committing our city funds for this program. It will come from the, from the county. They will, will also be responsible for managing the grant that they received. And they will also manage that contract to service providers. And they will purchase the property, um, and they will provide property management. They will coordinate tenant-based vouchers with the housing authority. And they will secure additional, uh, grant funding for ongoing operations. So the first bigger expense is actually setting up the program, uh, finding those providers, purchasing the unit. Uh, once we do that, uh, we still will need funding for ongoing operations and they are committed to securing funding for that. That's the county. Now we transition to what we would like to outline as our responsibilities and also what kind of leverage we get, uh, by being in an MOU with the county. So we would like to lead, uh, the program operator request for proposals just because we want to have a saying as to who will be operating these units. We want to make sure that it's, uh, an agency that has a good record in our community and that they can also, we can also see that they start growing services from within our community rather than branching out from other communities to our community. Um, so that will be, um, I think, a benefit, um, leading the RFP. Also, uh, we will assist in identifying a location for the drop-in center. And we will have equal as what we think is a convenient location for the drop-in center. Uh, it can be, I want to separate, uh, so that four units will be, we are targeting that it will be a four-plex on La Vivienda, but the drop-in center will be in additional locations so that we don't use contingent units to that drop-in center. Uh, but we will want to assist on identifying a convenient location for them. Uh, we will also help connect that program operator, whoever we select to other local services or even our own, um, parks and records, the service, the programs that we already have, making sure that that operator is aware of our services and that we serve as a liaison to connect county services, new services and our existing programs. Um, we also want, we would also like to assist in securing additional grant funding for ongoing operations. We are not committing to this, but that we will be proactive if we see any funding opportunities to ensure that we have funding for ongoing operations, that we also, uh, are involved in the, in the procurement of those funds. to ensure that we have funding for ongoing operations, that we also, uh, are involved in the, in the procurement of those funds. When I go. So our financial consideration, um, at this time, we are not committing any funds to this project, um. But we, the city, uh, we gave up our permanent local housing allocation, our PLHA, uh, to the county. And they could use the money. They already have it. We cannot take it back. They have it. But they might use some of that funding, uh, for this project. And then, um, the county and the city will work together to actively seek other funding opportunities for future operation. Sequa, uh, this is not a project under Sequa. However, because this is hard funding, it might trigger a knee part review. If that's the case, then the county will take care of that. And so these are our next steps and our recommendations. So if you are amenable to the idea of entering into an MOU with the county for this project, we will identify a project timeline with the county. Uh, we will draft the MOU and we can bring it back for your review. And then the recommendation, um, is what was on your staff report. It's recommended that the city council of the city of Solidad, uh, receive the staff report and provide direction to the staff on entering into an MOU with the county for the development of the Transitional Age Youth Campus Program, which is tailored to parenting youth. And with that, do you have any questions or comments for me?
Thank you. Thank you for all that information. I'm sorry. No, you did really good. And I just want to thank the staff because the slides are really nice. I like the visuals, uh, makes it really easy to read for us and I hope for also our community. Um, let me take it out to the public and then I'll bring it back for council. So any member of the public that's joining us have any questions on item B dash four? So I'll take it out to our community, any members of the public that are, that are joining us still. Uh, any questions on item B dashboard? Okay, seen none, then I'm gonna close the public comment and I'll bring it back to the council for questions and concerns. So, um, Councilwoman Corralen. I have no questions or concerns. Just.
No, thank you. That was, that was a really good. Yeah, the only, the only thing is that the end you said, um, that they might use the funds, the, uh, an extra funds to look for different locations. So do you think that they could buy probably more houses to keep it in Solidad? Or they will look for other places in, in the valley?
Uh, so they're, right now, they're entering the, the, the relationship, the partnership that they're looking for is with us, with the city of Solidad. Just by purchasing the four units, the, the four-plex, we are exhausting most of the, the two million, by the four, five, five, the four units. And then the initial startup cost will probably be up to two million dollars. Um, so I don't think they can afford another property in, yeah.
So I was thinking about a drop-in center, you know, like.
Well, the drop-in center, it's gonna be probably within already a, we are looking at different alternatives. We've played around with the mental health, um, office that we have in, in the drop-in center, in the government drop-in center. Uh, and identifying other locations, but the drop-in center will be more than office space for people to come by, not necessarily to purchase that space. It's more finding what is already out in the community and then building the, the drop-in center there.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I do have a couple of questions. Um, so in, in terms of the, um, the, the units, I, I, and by the way, I think this is, this is, um, great. I, I commend staff for making sure that we're looking at all housing needs, right? And this obviously is one that I've been hearing more about. And one of the barriers to transitional youth, uh, uh, has, is housing. And, you know, housing is one of the, the biggest components of whether they're gonna be successful, how they can access resources, how they can continue their education or what else they can do. And housing has the biggest barrier. So I want, you know, I'm in support of the project. I think it's great. So, but I just have a, a quick question in terms of the, the four-plex units. I know the housing, the Monterey County Housing Trust is gonna own that. Is there a restriction? I know working with federal funds or working with funding with, there's, is there like a affordability of, or a restriction for youth, uh, for that, for it to be within that use? So that way, you know, hey, it's twenty years, it's thirty years, or is it, is it permanent?
Yeah, that's part of the reason why we are trying to make sure that it goes into the, uh, county, uh, housing trust. Because that will create the affordability limit, uh, and with that, we ensure some other times when we purchase property or the cities purchase property, it might be a non-pro, another nonprofit that they purchase the unit, but then it's a nonprofit, has to do something different or if they have to leave town, what happens to those units? But that's why we're trying to secure that it, it goes into the county housing trust because that way we can also monitor the affordability levels. So we will purchase at market rate, but we will make sure that this is for tenants that are, uh, low and very low, um, income levels.
Yeah, but, but what is the, what is the, the restriction, the, the restriction timeline also? So if we, if the county purchased it, um, they, obviously the trust owns it, but is it twenty years restricted to be used for the Y O, the Y O T program? Or the Y, the T Y P program? Or is it thirty years? Is it, how many years? Or can they say, hey, we're gonna use it for twenty years and then we're gonna convert it into market rate housing?
I don't think we got printed that far unless you have that information.
Yeah, I think it, it would be a minimum of twenty years, but it could be depending, you know, on what the funding sources are, if they, if they put any fun, additional funding and what HUD would require. So it could be longer, but I think the minimum.
Twenty?
Yeah.
Okay, thank, thank you. Just so we, so I understand that too. And thank you for sharing about the Vina numbers. I think that's great that we can meet the Vina numbers as well, because we have to. So, but for me, it's meeting the, the Vina numbers that I think are important, but most important is really providing that housing for those needs that are needed. So it's a win-win on both ends. And then, um, the drop-in center, so is that, so there, you said you were gonna look at the site. So is that a new construction site? Would it be a new construction or would it be an existing facility?
It will be an existing facility for the drop-in center. Uh, we want to identify something that is a walking distance for people, but it's already, uh, in opposite, it's already.
Okay, thank you. And I'm so glad that I, I had a heartache about our PLHA funds and giving it to the county. And so I'm glad that, that we're coming back and that those PLHA funds, because they were for the city of Solidad. And I know the county is, has them in the pot, but I know at that time when we gave them up, there was a possibility that we would never use them for Solidad. So I'm really excited that part of that pot can include that and that we are using funding that was designed for our community to come back and stay in our community. So, uh, yeah, thank you. I don't have any, any additional comments or questions. You've answered them, so thank you so much. So comfortable with that. If we don't have any additional comments or questions, um, that is a, uh, item of action because we're considering entering into a memorandum of understanding or no?
Providing direction.
It's providing direction.
Disguise the, uh, MOU negotiation.
And then it'll come back.
It'll continue.
Yes, okay. So I think we're in agreement that we're out in approval.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you so much, Yatise, and thank you for coming in already and, um, making things happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Okay, I, Council, so we'll move on. We don't have item B dash five. That's been tabled for the next time, so we'll move on into our mayor's announcement and reports. And so I'm just gonna try to go through mine really quick. On the twenty-sixth, we did have a LaCo meeting. Uh, we did have the closed session item and regards to still the litigation that with Monterey County, so water management district and LaCo. Uh, but there was also a, um, revisions to the item mitigation, the final policy that the, uh, LaCo board adopted. That was in alignment with the South, the Salinas Valley City. So we're excited that that was finally able to move forward. Um, and so, uh, we'll, we'll continue, uh, hopefully as that continues, um, you know, we can continue with the, that, the developments that we have in place. On the, um, February twenty-seventh, I attended the AMV Central Coast Broadband Consortium. And here they talked about, uh, the funding that's been made available and that AMV is, um, overseeing for, um, our, for Monterey County, but also San Benito and Santa Cruz County. Just one of the highlights from that, I learned, um, that there was funding that potentially could run out from the Federal Affordable Care Program, which is what provides, um, funding for low-income families to be able to afford the affordable internet. Um, so with that, I know that, uh, we worked with Townsend and Megan to be able to, um, submit a letter to Congresswoman Zola Grant requesting that the federal funding for this program continue as we have many of our families that benefit from this program and we want to make sure that they continue to have accessibility to internet. On the twenty-eighth, I attended the Read Across America at Gableland Elementary School. So I just want to say shout out, thank you to teacher, um, Rosa Linda Delira and, uh, teacher Sonia Lee for inviting me to read to the fourth graders. I also had the opportunity, they had their, I think they had their, um, their intruder, uh, drill, so which I was able to participate in. I just, you know, shopping on a, a mother as well. My kids are older, but, um, it's just, you know, really heartbreaking to see that we have to be able to do that. We have to implement things like that at our school when they're supposed to be a places of safety for our children. Um, and then on the twenty-eighth, I, uh, we had the state of the city address and also included a resource fair. And I just want to say thank you to all the staff. Megan, thank you so much for including that. I think it was amazing, um, to be able to provide information, um, the resource fair and then also just share with our community all the great work that's been doing. Obviously, we still have more to do, but at least to be able to report out to our community. And then on the, uh, on the, March the first, I attended, I was one of the speakers at the Partners for Peace Pathways to Success, and this is a collaboration in the partnership between Partners for Peace and the city of Solidad as part of our youth prevention programs. Chief was also there and so Chief and I provided just, you know, more encouragement and, um, just a discussion with our families and our, so it was really great. And I want to thank Chief for sharing his impactful story, um, of how he got to where he is. And then on the, that same day, which was a Saturday, I also attended the one-year anniversary of Grocery Outlet. So just a big shout out to Crystal and Seek for, uh, being part of the community and having one successful year. And again, it's just encouraging our communities to really shop local, right? Go shop at grocery stores at the grocery outlet because when you shop local, that comes back through our public safety programs, through our recreation and other programs that we need. So those dollars are critical for us. Um, so those, in terms of the events I attended, um, those were it. I do have just a couple of, of highlights in terms of community news. So I wasn't able to go, but I know Interme kept an open house here in Solidad. Um, that happened on the twenty-eighth and, um, I just want to make sure our public knows that because when, you know, Vierester's talked about us being a resource desert, we are getting more resources in South County. So we want to make sure that our residents understand the resources that are coming here. Interme is an amazing organization that does a lot of work around mental health, housing. And so I'm so super excited that they're here, um, in our, in our community for our families. And I also want to just share with Megan and, uh, Yatise also in terms of, as we're working with, thank you for doing the, um, workshops for our home, for our Las Viviendas. Uh, but there's also opportunities for another funding program that came out of the state, which is called the First Time Home Buyer Program, um, First Time California Dream for All Shared Application Loan. That can also be used for our first-time home buyers for down payment assistance. It has different criteria, so I just want to make sure that we're also looking at those funding sources as we're working with our, our residents to make sure that they have opportunities, um, and access to these programs that are coming out of the state. Um, and then I know there was a long discussion in regards to, uh, seniors and our transportation. So I do want to let you know that, um, I did receive an email and I know I'm trying, I'm gonna try to work with Megan on this, that there was a request for the taxi service expansion to come to Solidad. Um, and that would be additional transportation needs, not just for seniors, but also for other families that need transportation. We haven't had that in the past. That's through MST. Usually, um, you know, there's an agreement. They want to expand to South County and to Solidad. So I think there's another opportunity for us to address the transportation issues that we have. And then I was also reached, um, also spoke to, um, can't remember his name right now, but he's with Housing Resource Center. And he, they want to do, uh, Housing Resource Center does an amazing job in terms of housing, but they do have an amazing gold standard landlord program that they want to implement here in Solidad. So they want to reach, they reached out to me to be able to see how can we have a workshop here encouraging more landlords to come, participate in this program where, um, they receive a voucher, but they also have then more opportunities to house people in these different units. And they're really looking at expanding South County. So I just wanted to make sure I shared that, Megan, because I think those are important. And then my last one is, I've gotten a lot of comments and I'm sure the council has too in regards to what's coming to Solidad, our, uh, economic development, why are, why is, you know, why, why don't we have more, um, commercial stores? Why is Ross not coming? Why are the bigger boxes store not coming? So I want to, I, I want to see if there's an opportunity for us to have a town hall, um, for economic development, just really on economic development, share where the city is at, at in terms of economic development, what we have control over and what we don't have control over. There seems to still be a, a lot of confusion. The city doesn't own the land. The city doesn't control the land, you know, but the city can work with developers and how can we incentivize that? So, uh, that is so, such a big thing because many of us that grew up here, that we've been waiting for, for a long time. So I think if we can have a town hall where we can have an opportunity to have that conversation with our residents and have them engage and understand the process, I think it would be really helpful to decrease a lot of this anxiety that's going on, um, in regards to what's coming and what's not. Thank you for that. So I'll defer over to Councilwoman, uh, to Mayor Protemp. Corralen.
I'm, I'm just gonna pass. I'll, I'll remember for the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember.
Just really quick, I went to the, um, Vivienda's workshop that was packed with people, um. Uh, I believe we were gonna have a couple more. Uh, so we attended, I attended the CMC meeting, uh, for the board and the, uh, I cannot remember any right now. Sorry. And then, um, I will, uh, be at that Solidad Historical Society next week. And, but, um, the South, uh, Sal, uh, South Salinas Broad Authority will be next month, no, this month. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's every two months, right? I just forgot. I think I was, maybe, no, it's next month. Yeah, it will be next month. Yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you. And then we go into council member praises. So, um, I'll start with, uh, Mayor Protemp Corralen.
I'm trying to, uh, read my, my own writing. Um, I want to praise the voters that came out and, and voted, um, yesterday. We had less than ten percent people vote, so hopefully, you know, that's something that we could see, um, you know, growing to, to have more, more of, of our voters and our community voting and, and having their, their voice heard. And then also my, my praise that I wanted to do today is for our city, the wonderful city of Solidad, our staff, um, past and present, um, council people. And with that said, I just want to make the happy hundred-third birthday to our beautiful city of Solidad. Saturday will be our birthday, so happy birthday.
Thank you. Councilmember.
Um, just want to praise everybody. I, I know we only have less than ten percent, um, uh, voting. I was a little disappointed that though we were gonna have at least ten, ten, at least fifteen percent. But I think that it also reflects the, um, the disinterest for our effectiveness. And I think that we have to make an effort to contact with our residents because if they don't vote, it's because we are doing something, something not completely, not taking into consideration their, their, their lives or their, their well-being. So, um, I'm gonna make an effort to be more involved in our community, a little bit more, uh, well, a lot more so that, so that I can connect with those, with those residents that did not vote and, and, and helping understand the importance of, of voting, um, not just to have somebody here, but somebody that actually represents your, your, uh, your needs and, and the needs of our community. So thank you so much for taking the time to vote.
Thank you, Councilmember Corralen. And I'm just gonna echo the same sentiment. I want to thank all the voters that voted no on measure P. I know we've heard that many times in our council throughout the last two years or year and a half. So, you know, I know that it's ten percent. If we look at the statewide, the primaries are always a lot lower. I know we're gonna have more numbers in November. Um, but every vote matters, whether it's one vote, two votes or three votes, um, the votes are the votes. So I, you know, I also think it's, it's important for us as leaders to be able to look at voter engagement and how are we doing that? How are we engaging our community? Um, how are we really making these spaces transparent and, and engaging to the public to be able to come and have a dialogue, to be able to be part of civic engagement and for them to understand that, you know, we are, we are public servants, we represent their voices and we also have to be able to be, be open and out there and, and look at different ways that we can engage our votership and encourage them, you know, not just to come to council and not just to, to vote. you know, not just to come to council and not just to, to vote when it's needed, but also other ways that they can, they can make their, their voice heard throughout the whole, throughout government and throughout this process. So I just want to say thank you again to the voters. And thank you to all the poll workers. My son was a poll worker this year. He worked last year as well as a poll worker. I know it's a lot of work. So thank you to all that invested their time and volunteered to, well, volunteered but got paid to be poll workers as well. So with that, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Yeah, I know it's really late. So I'm probably gonna skip through, maybe give you guys a written update on some of these items. I just wanted to let you know that we are trying to schedule our procedures and rules. Committee, and it's been hard to lock down a date. Oh, but it's like we've got it, so.
What is it?
Wow, I'm, I'm behind the times. So I, some of the, I, I know, for example, you know, maybe talking about the ad hoc committee, you know, the rules of the, you know, how the ad hoc committee is looking at that. But certainly we can talk a little bit about having the legislative ad hoc committee like we do, you know, is it, is it some, many is it ad hoc committee? I think that could be a, a good proposition as well. And then just briefly, I did talk to the superintendent about the quarterly meetings. He's still, you know, talking to his, his school board about it, but maybe even if anyone has opportunity to go to the school board and, you know, and express some interest. I think that's an option. Or he is, he's looking to see what the interest is right, right there. But I have made the first request of, of having that. And the rest, I'll, I'll just shoot you an email.
Okay, thank you. And we're going to future items. Are there any future items for this section?
Um, I, for me, it's just the ARPA fund ones, which I know that Megan, you have mentioned that you were gonna bring at the next meeting. And I think especially we're gonna be taking money or, or re, I can't even think right now.
Reprogram.
Thank you. Then we definitely need to see where we're at. And I had another item, but I'll just email it, it's not major.
Yeah, I think for me, I don't, I don't have any, Megan, I have some pending ones. So I'm just waiting to hear back on some of the pending ones that I asked for in the past. So, okay, so with that.
I do have a question. Are we having, are you elected official done next week? Or, I mean, next week, you know, until next month?
Probably not until April third because the certification of the election won't take place until I think the second of April. And so, yeah, so it'll, yeah, so it won't, it definitely won't be in time for the twentieth.
Okay.
So I do have, sorry, I do have a, an agenda item. So I want to bring back for discussion the districting. And given that measure P failed. The measure P did not pass. I want to bring that back for discussion in terms of what alternatives do we have at the county. So with that, then if there's no, no additional items, thank you so much for those that are joining us here.
Sorry, plain clarification. I think my recommendation is to wait until the, the council member is seated to have that discussion because I think, yeah, that will.
That sounds good. Yeah, as long as it stays as a future agenda item. So, okay, with that, we are joining from hand eleven twenty-seven. Thank you so much for staying.